Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Mau.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Schultz.
We will be expecting Councilmembers Smith and Schultz shortly. Our first item this evening is a presentation from Joyce Newmeyer, President of Washington Adventist Hospital. I've asked her to come back and give us up-to-date briefing on where things stand with the hospital and the certificate of need process, and any other pertinent facts that have to do with the hospital's ability to stay, to move, to thrive, to do whatever it needs to keep going and provide health care to this community in the surrounding area. And she's here, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the invitation, and I will go ahead and give you the information in complete, you know, about our move. I know some of this will be repetitive to you, but I want to be complete in the explanation about what we are planning on doing, and there will be some new information in here as well. So, and please, I have set this up to where, you know, feel free to either interrupt me with questions, or I'm happy to answer whatever, at the end, whatever you prefer.
I think we'll try just letting you go through your presentation, and then we'll have a little conversation.
Wonderful. So, Washington Adventist Hospital, under various names, has been here for about 107 years, serving Tacoma Park and the surrounding communities. We are currently licensed for 252 beds. We are a provider of health care throughout the Maryland suburban region for services including cardiology, behavioral health or psychiatry, radiation oncology, emergency medicine and maternity services, and other hospital services that would be typical of a community hospital. I'm very proud of the fact that last year we were named as a top performer by Joint Commission on several key quality measures. All of the Adventist health care facilities, the acute care facilities, were named that top performer status, so we're very proud of the quality that is provided in our hospital. We are a center of excellence for interventional cardiology, cardiac surgery, and cardiac research, and we are currently employing approximately 1,300 health care professionals. That includes people who are part-time. Washington Adventist Hospital is a leader in caring for the underserved in our community. We gave about $33.8 million in community benefit in 2012. I don't yet have the numbers completely put together for 2013 yet. The way that community benefit is calculated is kind of a complicated computation, so I don't have that yet. 15.08 percent of our operating expenses were invested for community benefit in 2012, which was the highest in Montgomery County. And you can see on the slide there, the others, both competitors and a sister hospital, and where they fell, but with Washington Adventist Hospital at the top. Our current situation continues to challenge us, and I know we've talked about this several times before, but I'll summarize once again. We are difficult access for patients, ambulances, and employees. We're surrounded by narrow, two-lane residential streets. There's limited public transportation, specifically that there is no metro bus access. We do have ride-on buses that come to the campus, but there is no metro bus access. Just this morning, as I was trying to pull onto the campus, I was delayed by over 10 minutes just trying to get through the drive in front of the hospital based on the traffic that was there looking for parking spaces. And I thought, boy, this would really be a real mess if there were ambulances in this lineup. Insufficient space on the campus and in the immediate area for critically needed outpatient services and doctors' offices. Outpatient services typically comprise about 40 to 45 percent of a hospital's revenue, and Washington Adventist is significantly less than that, just because the services are not terribly convenient for parking and in-and-out. We have aging and outdated facilities that just can't be sustained in many ways. Approximately one-third of our inpatient beds are in a building that is 60 years old. Many of you have been through the building, and you know that even some of the doors are not ADA compliant for, I mean, in any way that you look at it. You can't even get a walker through the door, let alone a wheelchair, and they're not readily renovatable based on the kinds of walls and the kinds of plumbing that is in them. Realistically, we just can't rebuild on this campus. It's a 13-acre campus, less than nine of the acres are buildable, and all of that is built. There's an architectural term called "empty chair," and that means where would you build something new while you stayed in existing facility, and then move into the new space and tear down old facility? You have to have an empty space to be able to do these transitions. They call it the "empty chair," and we don't have space for an empty chair for redevelopment on our campus. Even if we were able to, and there were space, I hate to think of the kind of noise and disruption that would be in this residential community with heavy trucks, machinery, cranes, and so forth, and how that would disrupt our neighbors. We have an extensive, growing physician subsidy payment list, and this is for hospital-based physicians such as emergency doctors and anesthesiologists and surgeons, in addition to employed doctors. The same issue that we have with un- and under-insured patients and how that dilutes our payer mix, that happens to the physicians. We have some protection from that through the rate-setting system; the physicians do not. So, in order to keep physicians at our hospital, we have to subsidize them heavily. In a few minutes, I'll talk a little bit more about a new reimbursement method for hospitals in Maryland. That is currently one of the environmental changes and trends that we're dealing with. Continued implementation of the Affordable Care Act, and today was an important day in that process. Continued growth of outpatient services in most every other hospital except Washington Adventist. It is clear that the health care industry expects hospitals to be pushing more services from an inpatient status to an outpatient status, and that's just harder for us to do with our lack of access. It is increasingly necessary that we align with physicians. That doesn't necessarily mean employment by physicians, I mean, employment of the physicians. It can mean other types of alignment and partnerships with them, but it's very clear that hospitals are going to need to be closer and closer and closer to physicians as we move toward population health as opposed to episodic care of whoever comes through your front door. There's a move toward, instead of volume-based reimbursement, you know, you see somebody, you get paid per click, toward value-based reimbursement. Another trend is a very significant aging of our population. The aged cohort of 65 to 74 is anticipated to grow 71 and 1/2 percent between 2012 and 2022. The 75-plus age cohort is anticipated to grow 31.7 percent between that same period of time, 2012 to 2022. I said we would talk a little bit more about the reimbursement changes, and I'll do that now. Since the 1970s, Maryland has been under a waiver from normal federal Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement rules. And what this means is that hospital rates for all payers, commercial insurers, Medicare, Medicaid, were set by the state. So, all payers pay a given hospital the same rates for any given service. That is certainly unique to Maryland, unlike anywhere else in our nation. The Maryland rate of growth in Medicare inpatient payments per admission under this waiver must remain lower than the national rate of growth in Medicare inpatient payments per admission. Now, Maryland was in danger of breaching that provision, and so it began looking at, with the spending going where it's going, how do we modernize this waiver to ensure that we do not breach it and to ensure that we can continue under a waiver scenario for many years? So, in 2013, Maryland negotiated a new waiver with the federal government, and it focuses on financial and quality targets in much more comprehensive ways than the old waiver did. Again, that shift toward value-based reimbursement as opposed to just volume. So, hospital rates for all payers will continue to be set by the state, so just as it was before, for any given service. Maryland must achieve, this is very important, Maryland has to achieve savings for Medicare patients of over $330 million over the next five years. This is an absolute requirement of the new waiver. An increase in hospital reimbursement per Maryland resident cannot, under any circumstances, exceed 3.58 percent annually, so there's a cap on how much growth there can be. Note that this doesn't have anything to do with volume; this is just about spending. Hospitals must reduce readmissions to targeted levels. I've talked with you before about how Washington Adventist has worked very hard to reduce readmissions within 30 days. I am very, very proud of the success that the team has achieved on this, and we have one of the lowest rates in the state. Hospitals must also continue to aggressively reduce hospital-acquired or hospital-associated conditions. Within Maryland, we call those M-hacks, or Maryland Hospital-Aquired Conditions, and that's anything that you get in a hospital that you shouldn't have gotten in the hospital and you didn't come in with, such as a urinary tract infection or a bed sore. And those are measured, and we keep track of those, and reimbursement is decreased if you have a higher-than-expected amount of those conditions. I'm also very, very proud that Washington Adventist is out of 46 hospitals in the state, with 46 being the best score, one being the worst score. The last report that I saw had us listed at number 38. So, 38 out of 46, with 46 being best; that's excellent performance. The new reimbursement system, it is an unprecedented effort to improve outcomes for patients, the overall health of the population, as well as controlling costs. These are lofty goals, but they're goals that I believe our health care system has got to achieve in order to be sustainable over many years. The state seeks to eliminate unnecessary utilization. In fact, they call it potentially avoidable utilization, while ensuring that appropriate care is provided in the correct or right setting. And that means in the least costly or most cost-effective setting possible. So, this requires collaboration between hospitals, other providers, to ensure that patients are cared for appropriately, both inside and outside of our hospital. So, this means we need to work with nursing homes, with physician offices, with everyone from home health agencies to Meals on Wheels, to all of the resources that are available to patients, to be sure that patients are receiving care and services in the most cost-effective manner possible. Hospitals are now reimbursed differently under the new waiver. Hospitals needed to choose if they were going to go under a global payment model; I'll talk more about that in a moment, or a revised type of a charge per episode. I will tell you, I know much little about the charge per episode, much, much less than I do about the global payment model, because Washington Adventist, as well as our sister hospital, Shady Grove, elected to go with the global payment model. So, that's the one that I'm going to focus on. Most hospitals in Maryland, I believe, are doing the same thing. So, hospital, the state is seeking to set a known revenue base for the global payment hospitals at the beginning of the fiscal year, so that there aren't surprises that are based on unexpected volumes or potentially avoidable utilization, but to know what the revenue base is for the hospitals. Hospitals will continue to charge for services within the window of this established revenue base, so we still need to bill and collect from insurance companies just the way that we do now, and patients need to pay their copays and their portion of their bills the way that they do now. It's just that that is done within a revenue window that is defined by our agreement with the state. In each subsequent year, adjustments in revenue will be made, and those will account for inflation, population growth, uncompensated care, and levels of quality such as those that I just discussed, among others. There will also be adjustments for market share changes, but even right now, the HSCRC, the Health Services Cost Review Commission, is not exactly sure how they're going to measure and how they're going to account for that, so that's still a work in progress. So, Washington Adventist Hospital's initiative seeks to address both our hospital needs and our challenges, as well as what is going on in health care, just in our environment and in the industry. A modern replacement facility and a medical campus in White Oak is sought, which is in the hospital's existing primary service area, approximately six and a half miles from our current location. It will have fewer inpatient beds than our existing hospital. I am not yet prepared to tell you exactly how many that will be, because we're working on redoing our financials based upon having now a new global payment arrangement under the new waiver. And I want to be sure that, you know, you may remember that in our last application, there are two standards that must be met, and that's feasibility and viability, and we want to be sure that we are applying for the right number of beds that will be both feasible and then viable under the new payment methodology. In addition to fewer inpatient beds, we will have expanded outpatient services and still all private inpatient rooms, which is also much more efficient than semi-private rooms, because then you don't have rooms blocked off for any reason such as patient condition. This property is adjacent to the FDA, and that builds on existing research collaboration for the benefit of public health. And I will tell you, there is more meat and substance to our relationship with the FDA and research that we work with them on than there has ever been. I'm very proud of how that's going with them, and I think it's a mutually beneficial arrangement in everything that we do with them. The new location is more accessible by public transportation, accessible both by metro bus and ride-on, as well as by major roadways. This helps address the needs of the area's aging population with senior-friendly services that are accessible. We'll retain, we will retain the campus in Tacoma Park and plan robust, community-based health care services there. I'll talk about some of those in just a moment. It is our belief that hospitals in this region all need to be strong for their communities. Inpatient care is changing, but it's not going away. I mean, right now, my inpatient, particularly intensive care beds are completely full at our hospital. And so, we know that even improving the health of the population with the aging of the population and what that will mean in terms of use rates, inpatient care is going to be needed for a long time to come. These are some of the differences between our October 2013 filing and the previous project that we have talked about before. In the previous project, it was listed at $398 million, and the application didn't include expenses for renovations in Tacoma Park. The current project currently lists $373 million as our capital cost and includes $33 million for renovations in Tacoma Park. So, you can see, we have sought to be efficient stewards of our resources and do this as cost-effectively as possible. The previous project listed 249 beds, proposed to build in the new project, and we currently are proposing 201 beds. Again, we're working through the revised financials right now under the new waiver, and that could change slightly. The previous project relied heavily on leased space by other third parties in order to continue to provide health care services in Tacoma Park. We plan to provide more of these services directly administered by Adventist Health Care and direct involvement by Washington Adventist Hospital, not turning so much over to third parties. The square foot replacement was $565,000 in the previous project; is now currently listed at $428,000. The financing, this was a major issue on the last project; I know no one's forgotten about that. It was proposed to use HUD or FHA insured bonds. The new project is not intending to use any HUD financing, but instead traditional tax-exempt bond financing. So, it would be paid for with some debt, as stated here, as well as philanthropy and So, I've talked with you before and continue to talk everywhere I go about how we intend to continue to provide robust health services in Tacoma Park. This is our home, and this is not a home that we will abandon. This is where we will continue to provide services and be a part of this community. We plan 126,000 square feet of renovated space on the Tacoma Park campus, and that's what we know about today. We plan to provide a shuttle bus service for staff and visitors between the two campuses in Tacoma Park and White Oak. Some of the things that we plan for Tacoma Park ongoing, we are actually already starting now, so we can demonstrate to the community our commitment for the long haul on our campus. A federally qualified health care center, CCI, or Community Clinics Incorporated, has already opened on our campus. We're very excited about that. No, it's in very small space, and we are anticipating likely approval of bond bill funds and matching those funds and a little more from our own capital funds to build an even larger clinic for CCI to occupy on our campus, and that should happen later this year. We're very excited about this. This clinic will be available to all people, whether they're insured, underinsured, uninsured. Rob and I, Rob Jebson and I, have joked about how the spaces that CCI builds out and the beautiful clinics that they build are nicer than some of our own doctors' offices, and so I think all of us would be, would be proud to be a part of these practices. This will also help us keep people out of our emergency department who don't need to be there and really need just increased access to primary care and a medical home. We will continue on the Tacoma Park campus after a move to provide behavioral health inpatient and outpatient services. While we have both of those on the campus now, there are plans, even between now and when we build and move, to increase the amount of outpatient behavioral health services offered on our campus. We have a women's center and work with the Health Partnership with Montgomery County for OB services. Also, GYN services are provided in this clinic, and we are actually renovating this clinic to make it even nicer for people who choose to use it, and we're very proud of the services provided there. We have an inpatient rehabilitation unit that already exists on the campus. We have just added beds to this unit and renovated the space, and it will continue to be there, and I'm sure grow over time, on the Tacoma Park campus after a move. Physician offices, most, if not all, of the physicians on the campus have indicated that they want to keep their presence there because they have a large patient base there, so even if they open an office in White Oak, they want to continue to keep their offices on this campus, serving the community. We've talked about a walk-in clinic before, where this, it would be a walk-in primary care clinic. I have promised you in the past, and will keep this promise, that we will try it at 24/7. If that proves not to be a viable model and the community doesn't use it and need it the whole 24 hours, we will need to dial back on the hours, but I have promised you we would try it at that, and I will keep that promise. I realize that in past conversations, we've had a lot of comment from the community about how they would like to see us leave an emergency department in place, and we've talked before about why that is not possible for us to apply for that. And I continue, although I continue to ask questions and research that, I will tell you, I have continued to conclude that that is not possible for us at this point. 55,000 square feet plus is anticipated to be leased by Washington Adventist University for both teaching and administrative space. This is a campus site plan for Tacoma Park, and you can see that we plan different entries into the building for the university, for the main entry of the hospital, and then the 24/7, for a time at least, well, the walk-in clinic or the walk-in primary care clinic would be where the emergency department is today. So, that we would be trying to separate the various lanes of traffic so that it wouldn't be too congested in any one place. This is the world-class science corridor envisioned for the White Oak area for health research and bioscience. You can see the red star indicates where Washington Adventist Hospital's property is. You can see down toward the lower left, a circle and a red dot that shows Tacoma Park and our current location there. You can see where the FDA is, at the Federal Research Center, and the proposed Life Science Village on property behind that, owned by both Perconti and the county, and the East County Center for Science and Technology; they're represented by the blue dot. There are very exciting and interesting partnerships between these different entities that could mean, it could result in a very unique kind of research center and science corridor in the East County, and that's proving to be something that we're very excited about, the possibilities. This is a rendering of the proposed new Washington Adventist Hospital, and we continue to refine this as we go, but this rests alongside the lake that is on the property, providing as many lake views as possible to as many inpatient rooms as possible. Our relationship with the FDA, and like I said before, is proving to be very important. We do have a signed formal MOU, or memorandum of understanding, to collaborate on medical research, and I'm excited that we actually have a second memorandum of understanding that we executed toward the end of last year with FDA's Center for Drug Evaluation and Research. We have focused on devices in the past, and we will be working with them on drug research as well in the future. We're already working together on testing of medical equipment, giving them feedback on approved medical equipment, looking at alarm fatigue and other initiatives, including sterilization of equipment. You know, the FDA has to approve a lot of both equipment and drugs, and they don't always get to see how does that work out, particularly in the equipment and the device area, because they don't have a hospital, and so how does that work out? That's part of what would be exciting to them about us relocating closer to their campus, is having increased access for research purposes. The Public Health Research Partnership opportunities will be accelerated in our new location. So, we did file the required certificate of need on October 4 of 2013. In May of 2014, we will be filing an amended application, and this is to make our project match up, if you will, with the global reimbursement model and methodology now in Maryland. All of the financials that we submitted were based on the old waiver, and the new waiver changes everything, and so we are having to revise the application. This will be required to be completed before the docketing of the application will take place. One thing to note is that licensure of our behavioral health beds, upon Washington Adventist relocating to White Oak, that license will move from law to Adventist Behavioral Health when the hospital moves to White Oak. That's much like how the rehab beds are handled right now. This will be transparent to patients and to families. We currently work with Adventist Behavioral Health; they are our subject matter expertise and managers of this unit, even as it's under our license, so I don't expect that this would be any change whatsoever in service to the community. This is some of why we believe our project merits support. It ensures robust health care presence in Tacoma Park now and in the future versus what I believe is a very uncertain future without a community-based, multifaceted plan that is sensitive to the changing dynamics in health care. To put it bluntly, I don't see how we can be successful with the facility that we have trying to provide inpatient acute care services on the current location. I don't see a pathway to success without a major change. This plan improves health care infrastructure for patients and communities served in the Maryland suburban region. It's additional points of access to care for patients and our community. It ensures the sustainability of Wash- It ensures the sustainability of Washington Adventist Hospital, and we believe that it's a unique opportunity to create world-class synergy amongst health care, research, and biosciences, life sciences. And we believe that this would result in job creation for the state and region as we have demonstrated in the application. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions, and I know my colleagues have some as well. One or two things I just want to get clarification on. When you talked about the revised payment plan, that's retroactive to January 1, but the revised payment plan wasn't issued until after January 1, which is why you're still revising your financials?
Yes, sir. Everything you just stated is correct.
Okay. And so, once you, once the certificate of need gets docketed, then other parties have 30 days to submit comments?
They do, and, you know, we won't know if there's any opposition to the application until that point. That's when they would have to make that position known.
And the city would have 30 days to comment? One clarification I wanted to get that I know is the case, but from what you said may not be clear to some people. When you talked about the 13-acre campus and nine were buildable on the current site, some people might think, well, gee, there's a lot of empty space there, and I know that, I sense that that space belongs not to you but to Washington Adventist University. Is that, what's the split on the campus there? Because it all looks like one.
Well, actually, yeah, the 13 acres includes what is hospital property, but some of it is not buildable because it's a steep bank sloping down towards Sligo Creek, or it's easement down toward the pathway toward the creek that we can't even park on, let alone build on. There are some buildings, such as a power plant and so forth, that the positioning of them really limits what you could build next to it, and so there are little pieces of land that are little pieces of parking here and there that aren't, can't, can't all be put together to build something on it.
Right, but I would imagine that some people might think, well, gee, there's all of that grass.
Oh, yeah, that doesn't belong to me. You're right. The grass out front, I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you were asking, the grass out front, our front lawn, that's actually Washington Adventist University property, so I don't get to build on that.
Where's the border of your property heading in that direction?
The border is actually on the road. In fact, the cars that park along the road right adjacent to that grass are actually on university property. I don't even actually own that property.
I wonder what that says about access when the Carroll Avenue Bridge gets closed? It's an issue more for the university than for you in terms of standing to do something?
I am deeply concerned about when the Carroll Avenue Bridge closes because the traffic, they can assure me all they want, the State Highway Administration can assure me all they want to that the pathway is not through the hospital property, but all you have to do is park yourself there for a few minutes and see exactly where that traffic is going to flow if a major detour is not planned ahead of time. I'm very concerned about that.
Okay. I just have two more things I want to check on. One is a clarification on page six of your slides. If you can go back to page six.
I am looking for the slideshow.
Just to make sure it's the lower right.
This lower right? No, here we go.
Yeah.
There we go. There we go.
Okay. When you, the, the lower bullet points there, the second one, Maryland must achieve Medicare savings of 330 million over the next five years.
Yes, sir.
How, does that impact you more than others based, does that have anything to do with that uncompensated care, which was early in the piece there, or is that totally separate? How is, how is Maryland trying to fix or shift costs onto hospitals?
Well, they are, I mean, while obviously related, because it's the same pot of money, essentially, they are two separate issues. There is, the hospitals are supposed to be reimbursed for their uncompensated care through their rates, but if your uncompensated care number is going up rapidly, then the formula that the state uses to calculate your uncompensated care just can't keep up mathematically. So right now, Washington Adventist is receiving far less than it should for uncompensated care, and we are in discussions with the HSCRC about that. However, this is a provision, this $330 million, this is a provision in the waiver that says, given everything else that's going on, whether it's uncompensated care, regular reimbursement, global reimbursement fee for service, one way or another, hospital association, you have to save $330 million of Medicare savings over the next five years. So there are actually two separate calculations, but it's all the same pot of money. I think what is safe to say is that there isn't going to be more money into the system, so we have to figure out with limited resources and fewer dollars, how do we provide care in the most cost-effective settings possible?
And so if you're better at it, does that come from somebody else's part of the pot?
No, there has been some scaling in the past. For example, the Maryland Hospital acquired conditions that we talked about, such as a bed sore or urinary tract infection. It used to be, under the old waiver, that there was a scaling, and I remember I talked about the hospitals, 1 through 46, 46 is best, 1 is worst, we're sitting at 38. Under the old scaling model, those who are worst on the list are penalized financially, and those the best on the list get that money. So it is a zero-sum game, and there's a sharing of that money, and you want to be on the right side of the list so other people are paying you. That's certainly my favorite place to be on the list. However, they are changing that because they're, you know, that provides no incentive whatsoever for the hospitals to work together to be better for every patient. What that means is if I've figured out how to be better, I don't want to tell number two and three and four on the list how to do that, because I want them to continue to pay me. They're looking to change this model, and it's not yet finalized, but they want to change the model so that there's incentive for everybody to do, to do well, everybody to help each other to reduce the costs overall, to help us achieve the $330 million in savings.
Okay, so anybody who thinks they understand healthcare financing in this country in general doesn't understand financing in Maryland, because Maryland is a case unto itself?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. Then just one final thing, which is, you just touched on the question that I think a lot of people in this community have had about what is really needed is to retain an emergency room in Tacoma Park. And if you can just say a little bit more about that in terms of why it isn't viable for you to do that, what the impediments are, so that people can understand what you're up against, what we're up against in trying to make that happen?
Sure, thank you. There is a moratorium right now in the state of Maryland on any new freestanding emergency department being considered until sometime in 2015. The regulatory agencies in Maryland are going to have to work through what are the standards for someone to even apply for one of these facilities? What are the standards under which they would approve or deny the application? And then what are the reimbursement issues for these facilities under the, under a new reimbursement model and the new waiver? None of that has been done. And so we do know that the state is not able to consider any applications for new facilities at this point in time, and if we were to submit a letter of intent saying that we were going to apply for such a facility, the letter would be returned to us. I mean, they have no basis on which to even give us feedback, certainly not to adjudicate it, and we would have no way to fill out an application, because, I mean, for example, the feasibility and viability that we have to prove for our proposed facility, because there are no standards, there are no rates or anything assigned, we have no way to even complete an application, so they would just return it to us at this point.
And if the legislature had passed something that said there will be the ability to set up freestanding emergency rooms, would that have changed that situation any?
I don't have a way of knowing whether or not that would change it, because I don't know what their implementation date would be. I still wouldn't know what the standards are for approval or denial of an application. We wouldn't have any way of knowing what the rates were, so we couldn't put together the financials that would be required, certainly under any certificate of need. So, I mean, we wouldn't have the toolbox to be able to apply for that now, even if there were a law out there, if we didn't have more guidance in terms of standards and rates.
Yeah, my sense is you wouldn't have the toolbox, the state wouldn't either.
No, exactly.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Grimes, then Councilmember Mail, and Councilmember Schultz.
Thanks. Well, as always, thank you for coming out and your colleagues who are here as well. I have two very specific and small questions for you.
Okay.
Regarding things that you mentioned. You said that in the late spring there'd be, or later this year, there'd be an expansion of the community clinics operation here in Tacoma. Would that be new services or an expansion of the existing services, or both?
They are currently providing primary care services in a very small space on the ground level of the building that we call the conference center. It's the red brick building, kind of on the corner of the hospital property right there. And we will be finishing out the entire upper floor of the conference center for a very large CCI clinic. So I guess in some ways, the primary care services that they provide won't be new, but they will be dramatically expanded. We do, however, plan new services in that expanded space, in that some of the specialists that work with Washington Adventist Hospital will actually be providing services to CCI patients in that clinic, rather than patients having to go to multiple physician offices. I'm not yet prepared to say exactly what those specialties are. I have an idea of it, but until I have that nailed down, I don't want to commit those physicians. But it will be both expanded primary care services and new specialty services.
It'll be interesting at some point to get some kind of utilization statistics from CCI. I don't know whether it would come through you or directly from CCI, but that's just a remark. And then the other question, it's real cool that you have worked out this collaboration with the Food and Drug Administration. I wonder, will any of that collaboration extend to use of the Tacoma leave-behind facilities, do you expect?
I don't know that right now. I've thought about that, and I'm not sure. It will depend on really kind of the direction of their research and questions that they have at that point. For example, I didn't plan the collaboration on working with sterilization of equipment. That was something that they thought up and said, can you help us with this? We don't, so I don't know the answer to that yet. It would certainly be available for partnership and work over here, I just don't know yet.
Thanks.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you for coming.
Pleasure.
And thank you for your help on the transit issue that we were working on as well.
My pleasure.
I have one question or focus of my questions, which is, you talked about both the CCI federally qualified health care center, but then also a walk-in clinic. Can you explain to me the difference between those two things from a patient perspective?
Sure. The CCI clinic is not currently set up, their model is not a walk-in model. You make an appointment, just like you do at a doctor's office, and then come and see the physician or the nurse practitioner or physician assistant. The walk-in clinic is designed to utilize the existing emergency department space to provide primary care services on either a scheduled or a walk-in basis. There could be some overlap of patients who could be eligible to use either location, but the walk-in clinic would be specifically set up to see patients who don't have scheduled appointments.
Okay, thank you.
Pleasure.
Councilmember Schultz.
Just sort of scattering of questions. You've said the hospital currently employs 1,300 healthcare professionals. Does that, do you mean literally that's the entire employment, or were you using healthcare, the term healthcare professionals, to indicate a certain type of employees?
No, that's the total group of employees.
That's the total group, okay.
Not just those who have a license or do provide clinical care. We frankly look at someone who's doing housekeeping in our hospital as a healthcare professional and expect them to act that way, too.
Talking about the reimbursement, the new reimbursement system, I'm trying to figure out, where you're currently located, the immediate demographic has got a lot of low-income people. Plus, not only that, many of them are immigrants who may not have had a history of good health care, so they've got accumulated illnesses or disabilities that need to be addressed when they finally find you, and so forth. And when you take that situation, say, and compare that demographic where you are currently to, say, suburban hospital in Bethesda, or Howard County Hospital, which has got the highest per capita income, I think, in the state, what, how does the reimbursement or the waiver system try to account for the fact that you're going to have a far higher use of unpaid care? And probably a lot more patients who need care per capita?
The rate-setting system should take that into account, and it should be compensating us appropriately for that uncompensated care contingent of patients. It hasn't been. The formula has not worked in the past, but the HSCRC recognizes this and knows that we have to improve that in order for Washington Adventist to be viable. And so it, that is on the horizon.
Oh, good. They're going to start, all right, fine.
Hope springs eternal.
Yeah, yeah. Also, hope also takes a long time to become apparent. Talking about emergency care as distinguished from a walk-in clinic or a community clinic like CCI represents, perhaps this is kind of a naive question, but I, or a softball question, but I, I'm trying to figure out how it's possible, let's just suppose that the state of Maryland 2015 or 2016 decided, okay, we're going to do this, or allow it. How's it possible to run an ER when it's not attached to a hospital where immediate emergency surgeries and other, the whole phalanx of physicians and neuro, you know, neurosurgeons and everything else that you might need aren't immediately there so that people who need treatment immediately, literally in an emergency, not just people with broken arms, how's that possible to even conceive of? I mean, to me, the two go together.
I have actually been responsible for both types of facilities. The hospital that I came from had both a freestanding emergency department and then 11 miles away, the main hospital, that also had a very large emergency department. And I will tell you, running those two organizations, even under the same ownership and just 11 miles apart, was no small feat. Because of what you just said, it is difficult, and there's an awful lot of transferring by ambulance, because if someone comes in with a true emergency that is going to require surgery, going to require inpatient admission.
Right.
Going to require intervention of any kind of an acute basis, they're going to have to be transferred in an ambulance.
Right.
That is absolutely true. Now, there is a lot of utilization of emergency departments that is not true emergencies.
Oh, yeah, that I know.
And it's more urgent and, or even primary care clinic style, and that's really, I think, what the state is addressing when it calls, when it refers to potentially avoidable utilization. Part of that in their thinking, I don't speak for the state, but I can tell you, we've had enough conversations that I know that they're thinking inappropriate use of emergency rooms is incredibly expensive, because all of that backup that you just referenced is very, very expensive, and so they would like to see emergency departments utilized more appropriately in the future, and more clinics, such as CCI, such as the walk-in primary care clinic that we're proposing. They would like to see that as a more appropriate venue for a lot of what currently is in an emergency department.
Good. Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
That's, I'm glad to have you here tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Councilmember Schultze.
Joyce, thank you for coming. I want to thank you for...
I want to thank you for the work that your staff did on the hiker-biker trail, trying to fix some of the runoff issues. I really appreciate it.
Well, that's our pleasure. I will tell you, I went for a good, long run on Sligo Creek the other day and realized that, I mean, I know through our conversations, it's not yet fixed. We have a temporary fix in place and hope that that will be completed very soon. I know they're working on it.
Thank you. So, I would like to dig into some of your presentation. One thing, will you make it available to us, so we can put it on our website? Is that possible?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. In fact, I think you have it electronically. Okay, good.
Okay. You mentioned that you're working with Washington Adventist University about them leasing space. How far are you guys in that development? Do they actually know what it's going to look like? Have they done any design on it? Have they priced anything out? Or is it just more that they want to use at least 55,000 square feet?
There are some, there's no design that's been done, to my knowledge. I know that there have been concepts of where that 55,000 square feet would be within the building, and I know that they have some ideas of exactly what services would be in there. But no, to my knowledge, no design or drawings have been done. There has been a letter of intent that has been signed, so this is more than a concept.
Okay. In one of our meetings, we discussed in the city of Baltimore how the state legislature sometimes comes in and provides money for hospitals for, they might be moving, or some type of economic development. Has your team talked anymore about this, or have you had any more discussions with city staff about this?
I have not, not at this point. I will tell you, I know very little about that, but I know that there are folks on our team who know more about it than I do and are looking into that.
Okay. Anything I can do to help pursue it, let me know.
I appreciate that.
Because, you know, if we can get money to help you and to help the residents here in Tacoma Park maintaining a quality facility, I'll do it.
Great, thank you. I appreciate the support very much.
Now, I saw an article in the New York Times that said only 10% of those people that do not have insurance have signed up for the Affordable Care Act. Have you guys used those numbers in your modeling, and how do you think that's going to impact the facility? Or do you think it will?
Yes, I mean, that is something that is taken into consideration as we're redoing our financials for the May submission with the revised numbers. I mean, we're seeing a little bit of, as far as volume, of people coming into our hospital with new insurance cards as a result of the Affordable Care Act. I won't tell you it's been a landslide by any stretch. And the fact that only 10% of them, according to that article, I mean, I think it depends on which publication you open as to what the number is, but they're all in roughly the same neighborhood. It doesn't change things dramatically for one hospital. I will say, and I'm representing myself as a private citizen when I say this, you have to start somewhere.
Right.
So, we're very supportive of the Affordable Care Act and the process by which more of our citizens can obtain insurance. But no, we haven't seen it make a huge difference to us now, but we are taking that into consideration as we plan for the future.
I know you guys do preventive care, like going into senior housing type of thing. Have you guys thought about going into some of our lower-income, nonprofit-owned apartment buildings? Because I would think some of those people are the ones that don't have insurance or don't plan on getting insurance. We'd rather pay the penalty, and then when there is an incident, they go to the hospital and they have this huge bill. Is there any way we could come up with a program that we could help these people before they get to that point?
Yes. In fact, we have some big dreams about the buildings that we would like to go into, particularly some of the ones that are right there along Maple Avenue. These are our neighbors. Right now, the providers that we have available to do that, I'm maxed out on them.
Okay.
And they're doing everything that they can just to keep up. And so, right now, I don't have the right people to expand that program, but that's top of mind, and we would love to be able to expand that into some of those buildings.
Thank you, and I know myself, and I believe Councilmember Siemens would love to work with you on that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much, Joyce.
My pleasure.
And speaking of Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for coming tonight with this presentation. I think it's very helpful for the community to keep up to date on what's happening with the hospital. I know some of this information we've heard before, but again, it's still pertinent and important for the community to hear about it. You know, along the lines that Councilmember Schultz had talked about, you know, we are home to a great deal of affordable housing in Tacoma Park, and that certainly affects the demographics and financial capacity of many of our residents. I know that many people that I have talked with are concerned with the hospital moving so far away, and the primary care providers being that far away with transportation. You talked a little bit about transportation, but I wonder if you could tell the community what might be available, or what plans you're making to accommodate people from this community who's used to being able to walk or take a very short bus ride? How they're going to be able to get to the hospital, it's much further away, when many of them don't have their own transportation.
Sure, I'd be glad to. First of all, for primary care, I believe they're going to be able to obtain that right here on the campus where they always have. We will have the CCI clinic here, that's not moving. We will have the walk-in clinic that the hospital will be administering, and that will be staying here, as well as many of the physician offices, if not all of them, that are currently on the campus. So, for primary care, I think they're going to be able to stay right here at home. If they need inpatient or hospital services that are not provided on this campus, we have committed to shuttle service between the two campuses. I don't have specific hours memorized. I know we kind of outlined some of that in the certificate of need, but, you know, it would certainly be during normal hours when someone would need to be coming for typical appointments at a hospital. So, between the shuttle service that we have promised to provide, as well as ride-on and metro bus access, which will be available, both of those will be available onto the campus, those are some of the easiest ways that I can think of to get there. Certainly for emergency services, I'm going to continue to say this every time I'm here with you, and that's if someone has emergency services, whether we are here or whether we're in White Oak, they need to dial 911. I hope that they're not thinking of trying to drive to the hospital, even if they're fairly close, because the EMS folks can start medical care on-site, even before they get you to the hospital. But for many of the services, they'll be able to get them right here, x-ray laboratory, if they do need to come to the hospital. Between the shuttle service and ride-on and metro buses, as well as some of the metro-access vans and so forth for the disabled, all of that will be in place.
So, for example, dialysis would be one that will remain here in Tacoma Park?
I don't know that. You know, dialysis is typically provided as a part of our inpatient services, and outpatient dialysis centers proliferate all over the community. And, you know, we are not a provider of an outpatient dialysis clinic. Most hospitals in the state of Maryland are not. But frankly, that's actually a great idea, and I admit to you, not one that I had thought of, but to see if one of those dialysis centers wants to provide a service on this campus as part of what we continue to provide after the relocation. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, and I think the
It's a great idea.
I think the need is here.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, you had something. I didn't see a light.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't use the light. Joyce, so good seeing you. Thank you for this presentation. I do have a few questions. I do have a few questions. First, what is the status currently of being able to have the psychiatric inpatient care licensed here?
I believe that that will be licensed under Adventist Behavioral Health, and it will be left on the Tacoma Park campus after the move.
Thank you. Have you made any plans yet around stormwater improvements for the campus as it's left behind?
No, we have not. We have not, at this point, planned any significant changes to the outside, what you see. These are all discussions about the services that are provided within the existing structure.
But have you budgeted for them? We're very interested in the cancer center that's currently here. Is there any possibility of being able to keep the linear accelerator and the full cancer center in Tacoma Park?
I don't see that that will be possible. I do think that the linear accelerator and those services are going to need to be attached to the inpatient acute care hospital. So, no, I believe that the cancer center will be in White Oak.
You've been doing some wonderful patient care transitions here in the community. Will you be able to continue those once you move to White Oak?
That is certainly our plan.
I assume when you're talking about the May submission for your financial, reintegrating your financial with the waiver, you'll also deal with how you'll be dealing with the debt on this campus and the new construction, as well as what you've assumed from New Jersey? Is that correct?
We will be submitting all new financials that will take everything into consideration, both from Washington Adventist's financial position, as well as our parent corporation. So, the financials will all be new.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'll just note that City Attorney Sue Silber has been putting in a lot of time on the certificate of need process throughout the period of time that all of us have been dealing with that, so we appreciate your input and questions as well.
Thank you, and it's a pleasure working with you, Joyce.
Thank you.
And we appreciate your taking the time to come here and make sure that we know the status, and the community knows the status of the certificate of need process and the status of healthcare reimbursement in Maryland, and that we can continue to try and understand how that works, since it's so very different from what anybody else might experience.
That it is. Thank you for the invitation. I appreciate it. It's always good to be with you, and look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thanks very much. We will now move to the preliminary part of our regular agenda, and the first thing up is, there are no additional agenda items this evening, but I did want to go over a number of items on our rolling agenda, just to make sure that people are aware of upcoming items on the city calendar. A reminder that tomorrow, Tuesday, April 1st, there's an election forum with Ward III candidates for the City Council, 7:30 here in this room. Next Monday, April 7th, the City Council will have a public hearing on the proposed FY 2015 budget, which will be released late this week. And the city manager will present that proposed budget on Monday, next Monday, the 7th. Tuesday, the 8th, is the Ward III special election. Polls are open on Election Day from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Volunteer Fire Department, 7201 Carroll Avenue, and early voting takes place on Sunday and Monday, here at the City Building.
From Sunday from 4:00 to 4:00, and Monday from 4:00 to 8:00. And that voting will take place in the senior room in the computer learning center.
Good, thank you. Then Wednesday, April 9th, there will be a special meeting of the City Council to receive the certified results of the Ward III special election at 7:30. So, a reminder to my colleagues for next Wednesday at 7:30 for that special meeting, and I will not be here, since I'll be testifying for the city in Rockville on the county operating budget. Thursday, April 10th, the council will be here for our first Thursday budget work session at 7:30. The following Monday, April 14th, Passover begins at sundown, so there will be no City Council meeting on Monday of that week, but there will be our second budget work session on Thursday, April 17th at 7:30. Monday, the 21st, there'll be a reception welcoming the new Ward III City Council member at 6:30 in the atrium, followed by the regular council meeting at 7:30, first item of which will have the swearing-in of the new Ward III City Council member. Thursday, April 24th, we have tentatively scheduled a budget work session if we need that. Monday, April 28th, is the public hearing on the constant yield tax rate and the FY 2015 budget. And then, as we get into May, we have first reading scheduled for adopting the 2015 tax rate, stormwater budget, and budget, and the second reading followed on May, following on May 19th, since the schedule is kind of set by when we need to get all these items into the county so that they can do billing as of July 1. So, that is kind of the upcoming schedule of election and budget items, is what it comes down to. Next, we will go to public comments. Since we don't have any voting items this evening, we'll take public comments on anything that is on our work session agenda, or anything that's not on our agenda. And if you'd like to make comments, please come to the podium and identify yourself and where you live, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Mike Mage with Montgomery County Chapter of the ACLU of Maryland, and my comments are addressed to your item on retention and sharing of information from license plate readers and similar public safety cameras. My comments at this point are very preliminary, because it would be helpful if your residents could see an actual proposal to consider and think about, and have a chance to comment at a hearing. And I urge you to keep an open mind and not take any even tentative votes about this until such a process can happen. I'd also like to discuss it in the context of the proposal, which we have seen, which came from the residents on Sycamore Avenue, about how to address crime prevention in their neighborhood. And I have just two preliminary comments on that. At one point, they mention street closures and, quote, "police patrols to control access to neighborhoods," end of quote. I don't, I hope they did not really mean that seriously. It would be a constitutional no-no, and that has been adjudicated in the neighboring district of DC a few years ago, when the police actually did this in the Trinidad neighborhood, and it was appealed to the court, to the district court for the Federal Circuit of DC, and it was ruled out. So, I would keep that in mind. The other point, which I think is a good point that they raised, is to have independent review of policing, and I think that would be very appropriate for Tacoma Park, and I urge you to give some consideration to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mage, has the ACLU at any level, Montgomery County, Maryland, or nationally taken any stand or done any evaluation on the question of retention of license plate scanner data?
They have, and I spoke with the Maryland ACLU as recently as today, and they would like to see a real black-and-white proposal in order to comment on it, and they're very interested on commenting on an actual proposal.
Good evening. Rue McKenzie from Washington Adventist University, and want to begin with a thank you this evening. Our campus looks a little bit more handsome because of the bike-share pad that has been formed there just across my office. I was able to watch them do the work, and we look forward to that taking place right there on our campus. Coming up in a couple days, that's April 2, will be your annual service day. Over 600 or four young people will be out in your community doing various kinds of activities. The sign-up has been very busy, and we are praying for a good day, snow-free. Though the kids will love it, I think. But the whole point, as I said, But the whole point, as I said the last time I was here, is to really reintroduce our young people to giving back to the community. So, we look forward to participating in community upgrade on that day. We have our fun walk and run coming up on the weekend of Family Fun Festival. It's a 5K run, and there's still time to sign up. You can sign up that very morning, come out, and run for health. And then, at the end of the day, we will ask you to do the Toyota jump and say, "What will you do with all the money you save from the good health?" So, please come on out and join us. And finally, our Family Fun Festival, which actually began in this city on a sand, that Taste of Tacoma. This will take place on the 14th. All plans are on board, and we're looking forward to 5,000 to 7,000 people coming out on that day to taste international food, and lots of fun for the children. It's being intentionally planned for them. And it is our delight to be a part of this community, and we plan to make our presence felt in the positive things we can do to make it a better place to live. I have a colleague with me here, Mr. Watkins, and he will also share a couple of things he's doing at the university.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Curtis Watkins. I'm the new business and community development coordinator for the university, and I just wanted to share some exciting things that's going on this summer. We're planning on having a soccer camp for young kids that are perceived disadvantaged. I always look at young people as, everybody else might call them at risk, I call them at promise. And also, we're going to have a music camp, where we're going to be teaching them tap, keyboard, and also vocal lessons just as well. And the one thing that's exciting that we're partnering with the hospital on is a Staywell program, which is targeting the senior peer health advocates. And so, we're looking at being of service to the seniors in this community in a way that, when you go to a doctor's appointment, sometimes the doctor is telling you some things, and you really don't understand what the doctor is telling you. But we want to match them up with another senior who can help navigate them to that understanding of what the medical terms that the doctor is using, and help them better understand how they can take care of themselves just as well. So, I thank you for your time this evening, and I look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you, and I had indicated today that I couldn't be there at the Family Fun Fest, but I'm trying to arrange for the Mayor Pro Tem or somebody to be there to welcome people to the city.
Thank you.
I'll be there.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Okay. Councilmember Smith, 11:45 on Sunday, the 13th.
Hi. I, my name is Ann Perro. I'm from Ward III, and I just wanted to talk about the license plate reader issue. And a couple of points. One, I am interested in understanding the concerns the ACLU has, and I'd like that, and I'd like there to be a discussion about those concerns relative to concerns other citizens have about crime. I'll just say, I came here and I was helped organize the crime meeting, because after three burglaries of my own home, and one of my sisters who lived down the street, I have kids who, an eight-year-old son in particular, who won't be alone in any given room in the house. And I, you know, our neighborhood has felt ransacked, and a neighbor down the street more recently was held up armed robbery. And so, something needs to be done, and I respect what the ACLU is, their concerns, but I also feel like we need a better information exchange among the jurisdictions. And I don't know how many people here know that you don't need to go very far from the borders of Tacoma Park before your license plate is read and that data is kept for a very long time. And so, I, you know, we need to figure out a balance that meets the needs of the, you know, the population as much as possible, but we need better information exchange somehow. We need, you know, to deal with this issue of burglaries. I noticed in the annual report, you know, 72% increase in burglaries this year, and honestly, we've felt it. The other thing is, I want to echo the support for an independent review. I really do hope you pursue that. I think it's important to understand the big picture, to see what we can do, and not just take each issue and each measure piecemeal. So, thanks a lot for this opportunity. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Nay, and I also was a member of the Sycamore ad hoc group looking into the crime issue. We also were a victim of a burglary recently. I'm also have an ACLU background. I was on the Maryland Legal Committee for many years and worked for the ACLU. I'm also on the Chief Goldberg's Advisory Committee, so I have, trying to keep kind of all the different perspectives in mind, and I know a lot of these issues are not simple. There are different valid perspectives on many sides. In terms of the use of the license plate readers, I think it's, from what we've, I've heard about it, and I'm not an expert on it at all, it seems like it's a highly effective tool to help the police detect cars and their registered drivers who may have an outstanding warrant, or driving a stolen auto, or a hijacker, and so forth. So, it's a very strong, powerful technology, and I'm glad the police are using it. And as we know, even if they weren't, they're being used in all the surrounding jurisdictions as well. And so, I agree with what Ann Perro was saying about the need to coordinate, and I think the Chief Goldberg agrees with that. We clearly need to have operable LPRs. If there are some that are not working, they need to be fixed immediately or replaced, probably we need to get additional ones, if they are as effective as we think they are. At the same time, because it's such a powerful technology, we need to have a policy that will assure that they're only used for appropriate targeting of illegal activities, or investigations of reasonable suspicion of illegal activity. They have been abused in some states. I'm not saying right here, but I've read about some abuse in Massachusetts and other areas. The ACLU has written a long paper on it, which is available online, which points out some of the problems, and the need for having a policy to limit the police discretion, so that an individual officer does not go off and start doing something using the technology. There also, as these, as these license plates are read hundreds an hour, most of the, oh, I'm sorry, I guess my time is almost up. Most of the hits are of innocent people, and the question is, what happens to the data of those innocent people? Some states and some cities have, are deleting that data immediately, keeping other data for much longer periods of time. That's something that should be considered. I think having a dialogue with the ACLU and to figure out exactly what the concerns are would be very helpful. About the, the point was about access, limiting access to the community through street closures. There was no attempt to try to stop people from coming into a neighborhood. It's try to limit it and to try to redirect, so have a new approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buddy Daniels, 19 Sherman Avenue. My brother-in-law, Jack Cohen, and I would like to thank the Public Works Department for picking up 25 to 30 bags of yard waste on Monday, March 17th. That's the Monday it snowed eight inches. You see, our neighbors organized a yard cleanup on Saturday, March 15th. I had no idea about it on Saturday. I came home Saturday night, and there's 25, 30 bags of yard waste in our street and in front of our driveway. For once, I was speechless, and as you know, that's a very, very rare situation. On Sunday, I walked around our neighborhood and personally thanked everyone involved in the cleanup. I found out there were over 20 to 25 neighbors who were involved. That's amazing, and thank them again. But the organizers told me, we did not realize how many neighbors would participate. They just showed up, or how many bags of yard waste that they were collecting, until they got it all up there. On Sunday, I called Public Works and left a phone message and explained the situation. I would have called earlier, but I didn't know about the Saturday cleanup. Of course, Monday, it snowed eight inches, and with all of Public Works' other duties that day, I figured, no way they could pick up all those bags, no way. But sure enough, I was at work around 3:30, I went into work, and I received a phone call from Elizabeth of Public Works. She said a crew was going to pick up the bags of yard waste that afternoon. We left work early, and I arrived home. All the bags were gone, and the crew had cleaned everything up, like the street had been swept. I would like to thank Elizabeth for being so nice and understanding on the phone, and to the Public Works crew for doing such a nice job, because I'm sure it was a long and hard day for them. So, thank them also. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lovelace, in the back.
Hello, this is Pat Lovelace, the favorite peace delegate. One thing I want to ask the City Council, if it's possible to have a Children's Night here once a month, so that they can give us some information on what's going on in their schools, and how we can help them, you know, make their time better and more educational, and if they're having any problems, or something that the city can help them out with. Another thing, too, is I notice it's, a lot of times, some people can't make it into the meetings to speak up at City Council, and I was wondering if they could have a system for Collins, so that people can call in and speak out on the City Council during their public comment period? Because somebody else had mentioned to me the same thing, you know, that some people are in their 80s and 90s, some people are actually in the hospital and may want to say something, and they should have a phone line for Collins. The next thing I won't bring up is, at the end of this month, we're having a big demonstration against the Keystone Pipeline. That's a serious problem that's about where I'd rather be struck with. It's a pipeline that runs from Canada to the Gulf of Mexico to be refined and shipped overseas, and that's coming from the Tar sands of Alberta, Canada, dirtiest form of oil crude you can imagine. And it's going to produce a lot of greenhouse gases, just being sent through the pipeline and refined, and that's something we do not need. This country does not need it. It's going to run over the Ogallala Aquifer, which is a water, underground water system that underlies about nine, 10 states. All our, a lot of our farming is done out there, a lot of our crops are grown out there, so when you really think about it, I worry about, when that leaks, it's going to raise the price of our food up much higher than it is now, because that's going right through the breadbasket of America. And then, and again, the American Indians were not even consulted on it properly, and that's going to break two of their treaties. And I think, you know, we should really start thinking up and taking advantage of the rights we have to speak up for our community, so please, come down and protest the Keystone Pipeline, and like, because next time, your food prices may cost about $10 for a cucumber or $12 for a loaf of bread, because of all the underwater system is poisoned, and it cannot be repaired. It's irreversibly damaged once the oil gets in that aquifer. We cannot let it happen, and I'm not saying if it leaks, I'm saying when it leaks. There hasn't been a pipeline built yet that ain't leaked. Okay, well, thank you very much. Peace.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move to council comments. Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. Couple of quick items and a few questions for the city manager. Quick items, the next neighborhood play day, organized by Tacoma Plays, will be this Friday, April 4th. It's a neighborhood play day, because it involves closure of the 7100 block of Cedar Avenue that is right off from the metro station property, and that's going to be 4:00 to 7:00 PM, and everyone is invited, not just people in the immediate neighborhood. So, play day on 7100 block of Cedar Avenue. The block will be closed Friday, April 4th, 4:00 to 7:00 PM. Another quick item, I attended, as did Mayor Williams, the Womata Board Meeting last Thursday, when the board took up the amended and restated Tacoma Joint Development Agreement. After hearing probably over 30 public comments, ours and many Tacoma residents, the board did vote to proceed with the, taking the development to the next step. That includes the authorization of a public compact hearing that would be scheduled for some months from now, not too long, and that's the status of the project, and of course, we're going to try to stay on top of that. A few questions for the city manager. He's heard about this from me privately, but I want to express a concern publicly that I've had constituents communicate to me that matters that have been reported through the city's online reporting system, which is available on the website, do not seem to be tracked and closed adequately. Things just disappear into the ether. So, I've asked the city manager to look into the tracking and closure of items reported through the online reporting system, and you told me that it might not be until after the budget is concluded. I don't know if you have anything to add there? No. Another item, I'm concerned with the amount of time that the hiring of the Senior Services Coordinator, which the council authorized in our FY 14 budget, that is, we authorized it last May-June, has not been concluded. It's been hung up on background review. We're waiting on the state of Virginia to report something. I'm concerned about this, because while I understand delays due to external circumstances, whether there might not, for instance, be alternative mechanisms for doing an adequate background investigation of a candidate, whether a background investigation in all cases is absolutely needed, or whether there can be a conditional appointment based on a positive response made permanent after a positive response. I really do wonder, though, about an alternative mechanism that would not let us be held up by some other entity like that. Once again, I don't know whether you have any response there.
Just that, I think, as I've sort of communicated with you, that this background check just seemed to take a little bit longer than normal. I don't think that it's necessarily indicative of anything. As you mentioned, it really is sort of hung up with an external party, which in this case is the state of Maryland. We've called weekly and daily to try to... Oh, sorry, Virginia. Called weekly and daily to try to dislodge that. We had some news last week, which was favorable, but I don't even want to say it publicly in case it doesn't happen, but I'm hopeful that this week even, we would, we'd have some movement on that.
Thank you. So, part of the point, though, is to think about alternative mechanisms if we ever encounter the situation again. And then, I know that there are quite a few people in the community, as well as council members, who are watching eagerly the hiring process for Sustainability Coordinator. My understanding is that there is quite a pile of applications and all to sort through. For instance, there might be background investigations involved there, I don't know, but I'm curious if you can give a quick summary of your expectations, if you're prepared to do that, regarding the timeframe for the hiring. When, what, by what date would you expect that there'd be a shortlist compiled, to be doing interviews, all of that kind of stuff? What is your expectation? What should be our expectation in terms of the actual engagement of a person?
Yeah, so the, on the good side of all this, we put out a job application, and we got an oversubscription of folks that were interested. I think we've actually gotten a lot of very qualified folks. A down-select has already occurred, so we're actually down to a much smaller group of people, and we're going to be getting interviews, phone interviews, first screening interviews this week. It is difficult to say with some certainty exactly when we think that person will be sitting in the chair and actually doing the job, but obviously, the intent is to try to get them as soon as possible. We know that the end of the fiscal year is coming quickly, and so, I am hopeful that we are able to quickly move through this, through this sort of preliminary screening, get to some real interviews, and actually get a person on board.
Thanks.
Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll stay on the theme of sustainability for a moment, as you'll hear me do for many weeks into the future. I think it's really important that we try to spend the $250,000 of sustainability money that we put into the 2014 budget, and in addition to the hiring needs we have for the Sustainability Coordinator, I'm concerned we're not going to get there. I'd hope at some point, we can have a work session amidst our budget sessions to talk about that. I've heard some interest from my colleagues in using some of that money, for example, for purchasing trees to plant on the slope of the Public Works... for purchasing trees to plant on the slope of the Public Works area, down slope from the mulch pile. It's a big barren area covered in invasive weeds. I sent out a suggestion to constituents and got lots of positive responses for the city to buy the large recycling bins, the wheeled large blue recycling bins. We've done that twice in the past, I think 100 and then 200 bins in the past that were given to residents on a first come, first served basis. What I indicated to constituents was, what if we bought them, the city bought them, and I believe the Public Works Director said they cost either $40 or $60 per can, and we sold them back to residents for $20 for a discount. Lots of people responded very positively to that. So even buying 1,000 of those would consume a relatively small piece of the money we have available. And I continue to be supportive of either early investments in multifamily housing, renewable energy projects, including insulation and upgrades, or single-family incentives in particular. And in, you'll notice solar panels in many of our neighborhoods, but often those are the neighborhoods that have the most trees. The neighborhoods with our smaller houses and often our opener canopies don't have many solar panels, and so getting early adopters to take up those, that technology will save them money and potentially will lead to higher penetration, higher use by other residents in those areas. So that's the next issue. Going back to the issue of crime, many people know that one area of troubling crime has been robberies or other crimes at gas stations, particularly along New Hampshire Avenue. And I appreciate the police department's work on those crimes and on safety issues, on follow-up with the franchise owners. One of the stations actually on the, I think it's on the Prince George's County side, is Sunoco Station, in part because of city pressure on the corporate owners of Sunoco, they've now gone in and installed 24/7 remote surveillance with high digital cameras and microphones in the Sunoco Station, as well as the ability to project sound into the station, so that if you were in the station and you were to do something you weren't supposed to do, you might hear a voice come from above, which would be coming from Philadelphia, in fact, telling you to stop doing that and that the police have been called. We're in the process of trying to organize a tour with, for our police department and council members to go, Councilmember Schultz and I, and then we'll be trying to follow up to get the second Sunoco Station to do the same thing as the first one. It seems to be a program that they've adopted in a very small fraction of their franchises and a larger fraction of their own Sunoco stations. And I think perhaps it's a chance, it's an example of squeaky wheel gets the surveillance at a private station. So if that's what it takes to help make those stations a little bit safer and to be able to get the sort of data that our department needs to be able to respond, then, you know, then so be it. And Councilmember Schultz and I will follow up with a second one. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
First, I want to thank the Department of Public Works, which doesn't have not, does not have a representative here tonight, so I will give them an air kiss, if I could, for starting the work on Lancaster Road that I've been trying to get done there for several years. The morning, we woke this morning to the clanging and banging of people busting up curbs and asphalt, and it was music to the neighborhood ears. So we welcome the noise and the disruption of getting the curbs and gutters and driveway aprons replaced. Again, this small thing relative to all the big stuff we sometimes talk about, but always This past Saturday morning in the rain, there was, the Crossroads Development Authority, which is a designated state highway volunteer entity to clean up New Hampshire Avenue, conducted another of its cleanups. Weren't enough, there were not enough volunteers, but I was one of them. And we got nice and good, good and wet and dirty and all that. But one thing that came up is that there is a drainage stream or ditch that comes down off of Larch and Ward 2 on the west side of New Hampshire Avenue, goes into a giant culvert under or near Sligo Creek Parkway. And that seems to periodically to get clogged somehow before it pours into Sligo Creek. And that swale, which is probably 10 to 15 feet below street level, it's very steep off the edge of the street, was full of water, so deep that it was literally running over the sidewalk into New Hampshire Avenue. And there were untold millions of bottles and crap floating in that swale. This isn't the first time that it's happened, but it's just appalling because I know that this coming weekend, there's going to be a Sligo Creek cleanup. When you realize that there is just this incredible amount of stuff waiting to gush into Sligo Creek, it's just really, really discouraging. And I, if we cannot keep those kinds of things, areas empty of all the trash and the bottles, it's, it just makes it seem hopeless trying to keep the stream, the course of the stream cleaned up. I don't know what the solution is there, but it's something, I guess it's on Park Division property, I'm pretty sure that it is. But something's got to be done to keep this chronic backups from occurring. And hopefully, trying to filter or block the detritus from getting into the creek. I don't know how that can be done, but it's something that I'd like the Department of Public Works to notice and to worry about. On April 7th, Urban Land Use Institute is going to be sending over to us a, what they call a mini technical assistance program staff to study the future of the Crossroads area in terms of its future development, with regard to the Purple Line. That's going to be start construction in about a year or so. And I'm going to be participating in that. It's going, there's going to be a kickoff, project kickoff meeting. As far as I know, it's open to the public, all those who are interested. They're going to be looking at issues of how to get the right kind of development to happen there, how to preserve affordable housing, how to protect small businesses. And it's all being provided free to the city. Ericen Osberg on our planning staff is the guy who's coordinating that on our end. So I just wanted people to know about that if they're interested. I think that's, there was some other things I was going to talk about, but I can't remember what they were. Isn't that fortunate?
And before I go to Councilmember Smith, let me just point out that the item after our comments is the city manager's introduction of the anti-littering campaign, which should go a long way toward addressing your concerns about the debris that you saw entering, or about to enter the creek. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to congratulate the residents of Essex House. They got the required number of signatures to start a tenant association. I have been encouraging them for, I guess, almost two years now, and they finally did it. So now, all the signatures need to be certified by the city. I would like to thank, now, please, those watching, don't get mad at me if I forget your name, but I'd like to thank Sharwanda Oliver, I would like to thank Jacquet Frazier, I would like to thank the city staff, I would like to thank Biju, Loretta, Faith, and many others that helped make this happen. For those of you that do not know, Essex House is under major renovations, a lot of residents are apprehensive about what's going on. Some of them have not received their new signed leases. They're afraid that their rents are going to go up so high that they won't be able to live there. So there are many issues going on. And the best way to protect them is to have a tenant associations to speak for the entire building. So I would like to congratulate them once again, and thank you very much, Mayor.
I think that's it for council comments, city manager's comments.
Great, thank you. I'm just going to jump right into it. So we've got a conversation and an update from our HCD Director and our anti-littering czar here, who are going to talk a little bit about some of the efforts around the anti-littering campaign. I do want to publicly also thank Councilmember Smith, who I know was a, has been a fervent supporter of the anti-littering initiative and put some money in the budget that we have. And so, we're excited about it, we're excited that this month in particular, coming up, April's going to be a big anti-littering month, and so you're going to see lots of stuff around the city. And with that, I will turn it over to them.
Good evening. I was trying to think of an interesting segue, and Councilmember Schultz just beat me to the punch there, as far as bottles in the Sligo Creek Parkway. As the City Council, or excuse me, the city manager has indicated, at the request of Councilmember Schultz, excuse me, Smith, there was $20,000 included in the budget this year for an anti-littering initiative. We've dedicated half of that for staff and the balance for materials that we've needed to undertake a variety of programming approaches. And if you turn to page four of the handout that was included in your agenda packet, you can see that we've broken out into four primary program descriptions and analysis, community education and engagement, infrastructure options, and then a legislative and enforcement component. There is more detail in the handout on all of those initiatives, but I wanted to introduce Lucy Neer, who many of you know through the Safe Roadways Committee. She has been tasked with this and is going to tell you what she's accomplished so far to date.
Okay, so, good evening, and let me just tell you the good news about litter. And that is that there are several things that are going to happen during the month of April and beyond. So we have a relationship with the Alice Ferguson Foundation that's formalized so that we can use the materials of the anti-litter campaign that are already established with our logo throughout the city, and these are materials that are used throughout the Washington metropolitan area and the watershed in general. And so, these are materials that are recognized cross jurisdictionally. So we have chosen several pieces from all of the offerings from Alice Ferguson to use in the city, and they will be rolled out in the next week. Most are pieces that can be used and then taken down and used again, so as not to create more litter in the city. So you'll be able to see some banners around town in specific hotspots, also posters, car magnets on city vehicles, and on the side of the trash trucks, there will be wrap material that also displays the message of the Alice Ferguson Foundation with our logo on it. Additionally, I have reached out to partners in the city who already were working on anti-litter initiatives, but that I felt that we could form a relationship with. And that would be the Young Activists Club of Penny Branch Elementary School, Washington Venice University, several of the sites that the students are going to on Wednesday are cleanup sites, and so we're really excited about that. Not only because these are places that are litter hotspots, but also because once they're cleaned, in a couple of the locations, I have, I'm piloting a new program called Adopt the Spot, where a local community group or business has agreed to then take that area, which has been cleaned, and keep it clean on a monthly basis in exchange for some signage recognition. Another, a new initiative, well, it's been done before, but we're expanding, is Trash Free Lunch, and we're hoping to do that in the city building and again at Penny Branch Elementary School. So this is a really nice opportunity to educate the students about what it means to reuse, recycle products instead of bringing items in their lunch that creates more trash. Other partners are, of course, Friends of Sligo Creek, Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning, and the Old Tacoma Business Association, and the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority. So, anyway, the initiative is gaining momentum, and so after several months of reaching out to these potential partners, now that this work is starting to show fruit, because people are calling the city, they're asking about the initiative, and they're wanting to get involved. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith, you have a question?
Yes, I just want to thank you Lucy and Sarah for all your hard work on this. Residents have been asking me to do something about the litter issue for a while now, and I'm glad that we have this initiative launching. A couple of questions. One, I asked the city manager about a video component, like a PSA or a man on the street, because, you know, I've done a little research on this, and it's, it seems that the best way to stop litter is to have people that live in the community, that might look like the people doing this stuff, say it's not good to do it.
Right.
Is there any way we can do something like that, maybe put it online, broadcast it on the TV station?
Well, right now, I've had conversations with our city TV about documenting the different things that we're doing in the city, and then creating a piece, much like the Spotlight, the, are they called Spotlight? No.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway, snapshot pieces that they do, so that we can then show people what we're doing in the city to curb the litter.
And so, do we have some type of metric system in place that we can, six months from now, a year from now, look back and say, okay, well, litter is no longer in this spot, we need to concentrate here?
Right. We did do initial evaluation, and so we'll be able to then compare progress to that.
And how long is the initiative going to run?
Funding is available through June 30th of this year, the end of the fiscal year, and we've included additional resources in FY15 if the council decides to continue the initiative. We would strongly encourage you to consider that, because as Councilmember Smith has indicated, it's, a huge component is community education and outreach, and it's not something that you can just do once and people remember it forever.
What proportion of the budgeted 20,000 do you expect to spend this year?
I think we'll be spending all of it.
An ongoing, how much would you estimate it's going to cost? An ongoing litter camp, anti-litter campaign?
How many hours do you want to...
That's a budget discussion.
Can we actually answer that question during the...
Okay. All right. Okay, well, thank you very much for all your work. I appreciate it.
And I'm seeing more lights.
But keep an eye out for the, all the pretty picture Alice Ferguson things that we've been doing.
Don't sit down yet.
Oh, sorry.
There's seven of us up here, you know.
Six.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Schultz, followed by Councilmember Mail.
Yeah, I, just looking at the initiative here that you've written, it's tremendous. I'm just so impressed by the diversity of ideas that you've come up with. And obviously, education is something that's critical. But the thing is, is that where Ward 6 is concerned, the trash comes from the New Hampshire Avenue. Commuters, by the, I don't know how many go down New Hampshire Avenue and up each day. And it's evidenced by the fact that, given prevailing winds, that trash moves into New Hampshire Gardens. And so you get all kinds of stuff, like on Merwood and Holden Lane, Kingwood, that just comes in and comes down to Wildwood Drive. And you can be reasonably confident that most of the people who live in, in New Hampshire Gardens, aren't just dumping this stuff out the car when they go to work in the morning and saying, oh, here's a lot of good place to dump our morning trash in our McDonald's boxes. boxes. So, and the further away you get from New Hampshire Avenue, like over to Glen Side, there's almost no litter at all. So all of this trash is coming from outsiders, in a sense, or some of it may come from shoppers who work, say, at Aldi's or some of the other shops up near the crossroads. The bus stops on New Hampshire Avenue are often the most hottest of hotspots, for obvious And I just, I'm, I just wanna ask you if there's any way, because education's not gonna work for people that are just commuting through our neighborhood, how we can best defend that part of our city from litter?
Right. Well, if you notice the first statement, and that is that we do want to come back residents to understand and take responsibility themselves, but this is also, we're also looking at enhancement of city services. So, in the case of New Hampshire Avenue, Public Works is, has enhanced their pickup schedule, so they are picking up trash along New Hampshire Avenue every day.
You mean, like along the sidewalks and in the gutters?
In the bus stops. No, not there. However, that's where I have been approaching businesses, trying to learn who in that community cares a little bit, so that I can build on that and ask them to adopt a spot, so then they would take one particular hotspot that's near their business and agree on a monthly basis to clean it up.
The other thing that Public Works has done, and it's noted in the proposal, is to install additional trash containers and recycling containers, and then to go through and periodically clean them up, so it's not so trashy looking themselves. So we have more options, more pickup, and then as Lucy has indicated, encouraging people to adopt these particular areas that they police themselves.
Right. And, you know, when I attended the Trash Summit, it was interesting, I went on a field trip to Forest Heights, and one of the areas that we visited was a corner that had been a litter hotspot, and after they used the Alice Ferguson materials, there really was a big difference. And the owner of the business at that corner was surprised himself that it had made such a big difference there. But we're hoping that, in some ways, that education will make a difference.
Okay, yeah. I'd be interested in learning more about the enhanced work that the city itself is gonna be doing along that stretch. But I, and I, I know the Crossroads Development Authority, I suppose you've been talking to Melanie?
Yes.
Would appreciate, would want to be able to play a role in, and maybe you're already doing this?
Yes.
In educating the business owners and all that kinda stuff. I'll leave it there, but I think it's a noble thing that we're trying to do. I think that collecting litter is being God's work, because you're picking up somebody else's trash.
Right. Well, thank you for your part in the rain on Saturday.
It was fun.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mail, followed by Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you. Just very briefly, the document notes in passing that we do not have a mandatory recycling program for the businesses, and I'm fully supportive of us developing our own section of code of opting into the Montgomery County Code, which I think is an option, or having our city attorney do whatever's necessary to create a program, because I'm assuming that's a contributor to a large amount of waste that is not being diverted into recycling.
Correct. Those, that legislative approach has been initiated, but for a variety of reasons, it's taking longer than we had hoped.
Great, thank you.
But it is underway.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you. Thank you for putting this program together. I'm just hopeful that as you're thinking about where you're going to be concentrating your efforts, that you will not forget the, along the stores, the area of stores on Maple Avenue at Sherman.
That spot has already been adopted.
Thank you.
Okay.
One of the things I'd like to point out, and in the development of this approach, we included the code enforcement staff, comments that we received from city council members, as well as the community at large, input from folks at Sligo, or Friends of Sligo Creek, for example, as well as planning staff. So, if we didn't find a hotspot, or one that we missed, please let us know, because we have it all mapped out and walked it, driven it, and are always looking for another spot.
There's certainly one hotspot at 115 Lee Avenue, but I think that's a different issue.
There are many issues, but that is a hotspot.
Thank you.
Does the city manager have other comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'll mention the proclamation that I signed today, proclaiming April as anti-littering month, and I'll just read you the therefore of it. Now, therefore, I, Bruce R. Williams, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the city council, do hereby declare April to be anti-litter month in the city of Tacoma Park, and encourage residents and businesses to take control, take care of your trash, and join in the community's efforts to keep Tacoma Park clean and litter free. Next item is adoption of minutes. We have two sets of minutes from February 18th and February 24th. Would somebody like to move adoption of those minutes?
I move.
Second.
They're moving seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been adopted. Why don't we take a short, five-minute break, and we will come back for our final two items, which are the Police Department's annual report and discussion of retention of information.
Councilmember Schultz. You're wanted.
Councilmember Smith.
Siemens is.
Okay, we're ready to resume our meeting, and we are now at our work session, and the first item is the Police Department's annual report. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, Seaman. And for those that don't know the staff, I've got Captain Freshcorn, who's in charge of Criminal Investigation Division, Captain Bowers, Administrative Services, and of course, the infamous Kathy Plevy, who everybody in the city knows, maybe not by face, and then Ron Hardy's our emergency manager, Corporal Conrad, who has been, really been beaten up with recruiting for the last year, among other duties, and then Captain Collington for Operations, Sergeant Gilbert, who's in charge of traffic and speed cameras, and Dee Dee, Diana Dean, is our Witness Assistance Coordinator, and then Jack Benwagen is our Policy Manager, so.
Is Buddy Daniels on your staff?
Hmm?
Is Buddy Daniels on your staff?
The infamous.
I might as well pay him, he's there, you know, I can't turn around without him being there, so. I don't wanna belabor the annual report. I will just say that, you know, most of this, we've gone over in the last meeting and with the Sycamore meeting, most of the statistics have not changed. We did have a 4% reduction over last year in overall crime, in Part 1 crimes, and if you look at the five-year average, we're down 19% over the five-year for total, Part 1 crimes, and about 43% for total crime. But that's, Part 1 is 19%. And someone alluded earlier that the burglaries were up, but they actually were only up 7.9% over the five-year average. So, last year, 2012 was, or 2012, two years, was really an aberration, for whatever reason. I think it's because we had a trend with two groups of people that were doing burglaries in the city, and we were able to get very lucky and very quickly make some apprehensions, and the burglaries dropped off drastically after that. That was sort of an aberration. It was well below the average.
And Chief, can you just take a second and let people know what defines a Part 1 crime? And also give a quick definition of robbery, burglary, and larceny?
Okay. Part 1 crimes are the more serious crimes, which include homicide, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, which means a felonious assault can be with a weapon, or a serious type assault, even if it's with no weapon involved, burglary, larceny, and auto theft. So that would be Part 1 crimes. Part 2 crimes could be everything from some frauds to, you know, not vandalism, but, well, some vandalisms, destruction of property, animal complaints, city code violations, things like that. So there's a whole litany of other crimes, but these are the ones that people are usually most concerned about, because they're the most visible and the most serious.
Where do drug things show up?
Part 2.
Part 2?
Yeah. Yeah. So...
And then define robbery, burglary, larceny.
Yeah, robbery, robbery is the taking of property from an individual or a business with force or threat of force. There doesn't necessarily have to be a weapon, there's armed robbery, there's robbery. It's still a property crime, but think of it as taking it from a person versus a burglary, where somebody breaks into a house, there's a breaking and entering, and they take property out of the house. So that would be the difference. And a lot of people say, my house was robbed, it wasn't robbed, it was burglarized, under the definition. Larceny, of course, is just theft, it's stealing. You have felony theft and misdemeanor theft, but they're all in that same category. Auto theft is also one of the top Part 7 offenses, and I think it's one of the more serious ones, because it's usually related to some of the other crimes that we have to deal with, whether it's robbery or burglary, because no burglar or robber wants to walk. They're usually using a car, they're usually using a stolen car. So, it's not something that we wanna neglect.
While we're talking about auto theft, I noticed that there's been a steady trend from 2008 to current day, a decline. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, I don't wanna look...
Anything to do with technology?
Our stats are still gonna be fairly good, but I wouldn't wanna look at the local jurisdictions around us, because you're gonna see an increase, I think, over last year. Carjackings, for instance, are up 160% in Prince George's County this year so far, and it's mainly because of the same group of individuals that were doing the carjackings in Prince George's County, DC, Montgomery County, and Tacoma Park, same individuals that we arrested earlier this month. They carjack one car, do some robberies, carjack another car while they're driving the stolen car, and usually, I think, Prince George's County right now has a list of about 100 cars that are outstanding right now, since about December. So, it's big business. Car theft sometimes is ignored by many police departments, because it's just a property crime, you know, the insurance pays for it, but the reality is, we're all paying for it. If you look at the stolen cars right now, some kid on the streets steals one, sells it, turns around, sells it for $2,000, turns around, sells it to another guy for $4,000, and then $10,000 later, they're putting it on a shipping container, sending it to East Africa with the Maryland tags on it, because they get a premium for having United States tags on it overseas, and, you know, somebody's made a quick $10,000 on your car. So, there, it's an organized, it's not just being used by joyriders and street thugs. And of course, then the ones that do wreck, and there's personal injury, and, you know, an immense amount of property damage out of this. So it's a very serious crime, and that's why it's included, even though it's, you know, car theft, you know, a lot of people just don't look at it as a serious crime. But yeah, the trend has been regionally down. Prince George's County has an auto theft team, and we've been working really closely with them for the last couple of months, really been very productive working with them.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we can go back, if you want, good, if you turn to some of the arrest origin. Over last year, we're still at the same, about 25% of our arrests are city residents, 25 or less generally, the rest are from outlying jurisdictions. You'll note...
What page is that, Chief?
13.
13.
Yeah, page 13, 14. And on page 15, you'll see all drug offenses and where the offenders come. Again, only 22, 23% are Tacoma Park residents, the rest are from outside the city that we are arresting for drug offenses. And then, one of the trends that was a little, wasn't really surprising this year, is marijuana arrests are way down. Part of that is because of the legislature's mandate that all misdemeanor marijuana arrests are charged by citation. And generally, when you de-emphasize it like that in the legislature, you see a drop-off in enforcement. That doesn't mean that we don't have a zero-tolerance policy for somebody walking down the street or sitting in a park smoking, but that is probably, you know, part of the reason why those statistics have dropped.
But that didn't extend to juveniles?
No, no. No, and, but juveniles are a whole different story, because they, when they get arrested, especially for a first offense drug case, or they'll be going through some sort of diversion program or another program, they're not gonna necessarily go to court anyway. That is one of the things that we instituted this year, was that we have joined with the county, that we now have pre-screening of juvenile arrests, which we did before, but now, instead of going straight to Juvenile Justice Services or DJS, it goes to the screener, and they can create a contract with the offender, that they have to go through certain types of treatment programs, group programs, community service. They have 180 days or so to complete that contract. Failure to do so puts them back into the system. If they complete the contract, you know, there's no charges brought against them, and we found that, at least with the county, and we just started doing it, that the recidivism rate drops almost 80%. So, they're seeing very few repeat customers once they go through this program versus the usual, what happens with Department of Juvenile Services, you get arrested, let's say for theft, even in auto theft, you go in there and they, you, DJS sends you a reprimand. And we all know, you know, that that's gonna make a difference. So, this actually makes them participate in the program, and they agree to it, and they have pretty good results from it, which is something that we haven't done before.
The other thing with that set of charts is that while the marijuana arrests went down, the corresponding increase was in DUIs. Was that anything in particular?
I think we hired Max Glushkopf. We have some new, younger officers that are very enthusiastic about taking drunk drivers off the road, and that's a good thing. And that's, so DUI arrests have gone up.
Good.
But you did notice that, thank you.
Because that was the switch.
Yeah. Automated speed enforcement, it doesn't look like we took too many hits in the legislature this year. I still don't know where the dust is gonna settle. I think we're gonna be required to do some audits, and I think, did that pass? You know if that passed? The audits?
Audit.
The audits?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, there's gonna be a little bit more paper trail and audits that have to take place, but it's not gonna drastically change the way we do business, at least not for now. The accident collision data speaks for itself, it's still going down. There was a little note in here about the increase in traffic collisions on New Hampshire Avenue, but I think most of that's due to the traffic pattern, where the lanes go from three lanes to two, and there are people that aren't noticing it until the last minute, and we're getting a lot of those collisions. Most of them are not serious, because the speeds are staying slow.
I continue to find it very helpful to see these statistics on the accident data for where the speed cameras are, because it's the reason that we're doing it, and it's the reason that the press and the public in general say is not the reason that we're doing it. And our data backs up what we're saying, and whenever I share it with other municipalities around the state, they're always very interested in the data that we provide, because I don't think a lot of them hear that.
Yeah, and one of the things I'd like to do for next year, because we're, the state has gone to a new traffic accident investigation forum, the old paper MSP forum is gone. As of next year, it's gonna all be computerized under the Acres Program, but the Acres Program has a lot of diagnostics and analytics built into it, so we can actually pull that data. Right now, we have no, we don't have a full-time traffic act, we don't even have a full-time crime analyst right now, but we, but the, to have a dedicated traffic analyst, you know, is just cost prohibitive. But now that this is gonna be automated, we're gonna be able to get some of that data ourselves and do some numbers and look at where the speeders are and the hotspots and things like that from collision data. It's gonna be a lot more real-time as well. So I think that's gonna be a good thing for us. But yeah, you're absolutely right. And I mean, I've talked to some chiefs that say, you know, there's nothing wrong with saying that it is a revenue source. That's fine if that's a secondary reason for having them. The primary reason to have it is to save lives and reduce injuries and reduce collisions. And I think that our stents support that.
And the statistic, even though we heard it last year, and maybe the, I guess, last year, on New Hampshire Avenue, that in the two years prior to the speed cameras in 2007 and 2008, there were 413 collisions, and in the same stretch in the first... And in the same stretch in the first year following installation of the cameras, there were 11.
Right.
And that's a huge decrease.
Yeah. No, it is. And again, I mean, you know, the fixed cameras are great, but they become, you know, electronic speed bumps and people slow down and then speed right up. And I think having the corridors there has really helped keep the speeds down throughout that long section now. It's made it a little bit safer. And while we're on traffic safety, I did note that the state, of course, without asking us, but the state has created some new bound, they're creating the new crosswalk at University Boulevard near Anne, right there at the, by the shopping center. They're eliminating that one crosswalk that was problematic. Not that we had a lot of pedestrians there, but I mean, it did cause some near misses and, you know, having an uncontrolled intersection with a crosswalk and people jumping out. So this, there's going to be a barrier there. It looks like they're going to do it. And I guess they're going to tear it all down when the purple line comes through and do it all over again. But it is going to enhance the safety over there. And I'm not going to go too much into the court decisions and mandates. I will tell you that the PRIA, which is the Prison Rate Reduction Act, does affect our department because we do have cells and things, so we just have to make sure that we have adequate record-keeping on those, on that law. Cell phone, you know, requirements of not being, using a mobile communications device while driving, we've been fairly effective at that, you know, but it's still, it's like putting your finger in the dike. There's, everybody's on the phone, but we do stop them. And hopefully that will also cut down on some of our collisions. We have one announcement about, there is an error in here on the date, which we will change, on the Drug Take Back Program. It's the 26th of this month. We are hoping to have been edging there as well.
What page was that that you were referring to for the correction?
It's on the Drug Take Back. I'm just going by memory.
Thirty-three?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
You get an email. And I did highlight, one of the things I did highlight at the Sycamore meeting and along with the, you know, the follow-up after that, was the CID statistics, that we have a 43% closure rate and that's phenomenal. It really is. I think most departments would envy that, that high of a closure rate. We're almost at 100% on our robberies, which, you know, again, most places would envy that, that type of closure rate. And that's due to the work of the detectives in CID. I heard earlier about the collaboration with other agencies. I will say, I think that we were doing a good job before, but I will tell you that since the meeting, I think we've made some real progress on information exchange on a more real-time basis and it's closing some cases as well.
But do we still need to make progress on making sure that it's not just dependent on the individuals who are serving in the individual jurisdictions, but that it becomes more regularized and put into policy?
I'd say yes, but I think that the way it's working right now, it's working as well as it can with the current technology. As we progress into, you know, sharing, information sharing, systems that allow one computer dispatch to talk to the other, I think it will get better. But right now, it's a pretty good network of people that are interfacing on a daily basis. So it's, as the group gets bigger, if one person's not there, the stuff's still going out. So I think it's getting a lot better. Just on page 45, just if you want to look at the Dispatch CAD events, we had almost the same number of calls, about 100 more calls for service that we handled in 2013. We average about over 600 a month, which is considering that you have maybe 10 people working per day. That's, that comes down to quite a few calls for service per person. Self-initiated field activity, also again, add that total in with the calls for service and you see a phenomenal amount of work done by a very small number of officers. So they're doing a really good job. Self-initiated is broken into traffic stop and non-traffic stop. And you can see we have about 13,000 self-initiated activities this year, up from last year, almost 1,000.
Can I ask, I'll wait after you. Ask you about these Dispatch CAD events, given the percentage, the number on average per month. Is, for a community this size, I know that, is that an average number, typical number? Is that high? Because I know that we're trying, all of us, very hard to educate our residents to, you know, report suspicious behavior and not just talk about it on a listserv, but to actually report it. And I just wonder if you get any sense that we're making progress in that area?
Slowly. I mean, every so often, I'll get a message from one of the council members with an email attached to it that has the, you know, hey, my packages were stolen off the front porch when, you know, when the delivery guy came and we didn't know anything about it. So that's still, it's still going, it still happens. We try as much as we can to have outreach and get the message across. And since we're talking about a little crime prevention tip here, one of this last robbery case, one of the things that helped make that robbery case was the Smart Trip card that the victim had stolen.
Right.
Smart Trip cards can be registered. Most people do not register. Ours did. And so it could be very easily tracked to the owner. And I would, you know, anybody that's watching tonight, please register your Smart Trip card. If it's stolen, you just go online, cancel the card, they'll get you a new one and the card's worthless. These cards are worth big bucks to these guys on the street that travel through, using Metro to commit other crimes, you know, and they'll buy it for 10 bucks and there's $40 on the card. So they can check the balance when they go to the metro station and that's exactly what our guy did. He checked the balance and they took a nice picture of him when he checked the balance. And it just so happens, we knew who he was. So, you know, I really recommend people register those Smart Trip cards.
Can you say a little bit more about registering? Because it's, I'm not quite sure what I would do if mine isn't registered, what that is.
You, through Womato on their webpage, you can register the card. You can create an account and put that card number, that serial number goes in it.
Oh, so that if you want to replenish it.
Or if you want to replenish it automatically, replenish it, you can do that. But it also gives us a way of tracking it if, you know, one of these criminals has one in their possession.
This would be a good topic for one of the department's alerts. I'm wondering about the computer-aided dispatch. What proportion of those are false alarms and is it a high proportion relative to?
Are you?
I'm back on computer-aided dispatches, CAD events on 45.
Okay.
You know, if you have 624 for December 2013, you know, are, which proportion, what proportion is false alarms?
Well, that, these are all dispatched events, so it could be anything from a larceny to a burglar alarm and they're not broken out. The data that's.
Oh, I misunderstood. I thought that this, when it said computer-aided, I thought you meant, I thought this meant like, you know, someone's alarm.
No, 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 no. Computer-aided CAD is just our computer dispatch. Those are actually dispatch calls for service.
I misunderstood what that was.
Okay.
Jake, can we go back to the local criminal activity? What type of crimes are these people committing? And do you have demographics on age?
I would have, but I don't now.
Okay.
Unfortunately, again, you know, we, just as this annual report was being written, you know, we lost our crime analyst and frankly, he's the one that could pull the data for us. And hopefully we'll have somebody onboard by the end of the month. We have a couple more interviews to do, but that's one thing that I can't get until we get somebody onboard. And then we will usually publish that, we just couldn't do it.
Okay.
Because there was only so much to get done before the end of the year.
All right, thanks.
But I would venture to say that we have had, you know, just anecdotally, we've had homegrown robbers, burglars, car thieves, as well as, you know, just drug offenses and things like that, assaults. You know, they spread over the entire uniform crime reports. We talked a couple times about the video sharing program and actually during the break, we were talking about how, I think it was Chief Lanier said that private video actually solves more crimes than public video and that's true. We are currently working on surveying local businesses and residents to find out if they have video, if they're willing to share it. And then we're going to sort of roll out a Safe Cam program sometime after the fiscal year, where we will allow people to go online and register their camera system with us. Doesn't mean they have to share it with us, but at least if they, it's voluntary, they can register it with us so that if we do have a crime in the area, we can go to them and say, hey, can we look at your video? And we talked about some of the other, the incentives for people having some of those systems, which the council can take up at a later date.
Is that something?
And some people have asked if they were considering a system, any recommendations from you as to what they should get? And I believe you said, as long as it's HD, it doesn't matter?
Well, yeah. HD certainly is the big, the big point, the selling point. The other thing is, you know, we can't give recommendations on a particular type of camera.
Right, right.
I know if I'm buying one for myself, I want one that has a low lux level, one that can be used in low light. In order for it to be useful for us, we'd like them to have so much, a percentage of their street that, you know, that they're covering in front of the house with one of the cameras. And of course, having a camera inside the house is invaluable because, you know, there's usually more light and that's usually when the burglar's going to smile at the camera when he's taking stuff. So that's where we can, we can get the biggest bang for the buck on that type of crime. And then, of course, the cars on the street. But it's got to be high-def because it's almost useless otherwise, especially in low light. If you see the grainy pictures that, you know, even some of the high-def cameras do at night, it's really not that impressive.
Let me just, the thing I wanted to ask is with the, are you working or going to be working with the Crossroads Development Authority because they have access to their entire membership, which is like 150 businesses?
Yes.
With regard to this camera information?
Yes.
And encouragement?
Yes.
Okay.
And I really appreciate, I know Councilman Mills has been beating Sonoco over the head and it's paid off because, now, we haven't had a real trend of those gas station drive-offs or robberies or thefts.
Recently.
Recently, but I think we've had one, one purse snatch this year where they broke the window and took the purse while the person was paying. But the same vehicle was used in three other events that same day. And Montgomery County, Prince George's County, and DC are all still experiencing those, so it's something we want to keep on top of. It's not something we want to just, you know, while we haven't had any, we're not going to pay attention to it. We do pay attention to it.
And I hate to tell you, that wasn't wood you were knocking on.
Hmm?
That was not wood you were knocking on.
Yeah, I know, but it's the best, you know. I guess we can, we can sort of roll into LPRs and the strategies for license plate readers.
Just one other thing on crime data.
Sure.
As you were talking about something before, it made me think about, oh, I guess it was homegrown criminals. And I was thinking about something that can be a concern to people that isn't a part one crime, but tends to be a homegrown issue, which is, has there been anything in our recent history about any difficulty with dogs?
Not really, no. Are you talking about fighting dogs or are you talking about the, just the general?
Issues either with dogs that are considered to be dangerous or dangerous breeds? I know there's been a whole series of rulings on that or bills put in about that and just kind of dog bites, dog issues?
Other than our one event last year, which, you know, obviously raised a lot of concern in which the other pet was killed, that's pretty much it. We've had, we have a couple dog bites a year. We've actually gotten more calls for, you know, sick raccoons and wildlife than we have for vicious animals, domestic animals this year. Just in the last month, I think we've had three or four raccoon calls, including today. So now, I mean, we, I know the community was concerned about those dogs being reintroduced back into the community and after talking to the county attorney, it does not sound like that's going to happen as part of the condition of release of the dogs. They're going to have to stay out of the county. I think they're going to be out of state on a farm. So, you know, the biggest concern in the past with Animal Services Division, you know, they only have so many animal control officers that work the entire county. The Humane Society runs the shelter or did run the shelter. Now they are county employees in the new shelter and we'll see, it should be a little bit more responsive, I think.
Okay. And if you're keeping track of wild animals, there's a fox that goes through my yard occasionally.
Oh, must be related to one that scared my neighbor out of getting out of his truck so, the other day. But yeah, they, you know, this is the time of year when, you know, the animals are out there and sometimes people see them a little scraggly looking and they get concerned about rabies. And we do respond now, but we have actually seen more of a problem with non-domestic animals.
Okay, thanks.
A couple questions, Mayor. I'm curious in terms of the repair of the existing license plate readers, we might get to that in the next agenda item though, but I just thought I'd put it on the table.
Well, I can answer that quickly.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, one of them's already out for repair. The other one, when these license plate readers were purchased, one of them was purchased through one grant, another one was, the other two were purchased through another grant and then apparently some of them got replaced. And so the company that actually does repairs can't find out, you know, where they got paid for and stuff. So we had a problem with the return authorization for one, but the other two, one's working and the other one's getting repaired.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't anticipate it's going to take that long.
Okay. And then, once you have a new crime analyst, I'd be really curious if we can come up with any statistics for the next year's report that somehow reflect the response of the department to, you know, hotspots as they were being talked about in the, in the Crime Summit a month ago? You know, so any place where we have some, you know, evidence of a pattern emerging, what does the department do? And I know you don't want to necessarily put out statistics or any information right away because that, I think as you've said in the past, could alert the bad guys. But in terms of the reporting back from the department on an aggregate basis, something that shows how the department, you know, in whatever set of ways is relevant, you know, maybe you could just, you're forced to brainstorm in that because maybe there's some way to reflect that.
Yeah, because statistically, it's going to be very hard to do, but we can, we can always show, you know, some, you know, expenditures on, you know, planned close units, overtime, things like that, what we did.
Right.
You know, just the operations plan without getting too specific, you know, just a summary. But we could probably try to do something.
Thank you.
So proceed with the last item.
Okay. Well, I have reviewed the license plate policies of just about every department in the Washington metropolitan area on this side of the river that uses them. And one of the common themes that's starting to come out is the retention periods and some of the safeguards. Let me just first address how license plate readers can be used. I heard earlier about, you know, hits for non-involved vehicles. Well, the whole point of the license plate reader is not just to find stolen vehicles that are already reported stolen or to find felony vehicles or find drivers that are suspended or their tags are suspended. It's also to enhance investigations at a later date. If we have a pattern of burglaries in a particular neighborhood, we may not have a suspect for two, three, four, five months. And all of a sudden, another jurisdiction says, hey, you know, this guy's good for this type of burglary. And then we go, okay, let's look at him, what kind of cars he drive and then we can input that tag number. It's like, lo and behold now, on the days that we had robberies, burglaries or whatever, his vehicle was driving down New Hampshire Avenue and East West Highway. So the investigative portion, that's the other side of the flip side. A hit in a, on a license plate reader is not everybody that goes through it. A hit is only created when there's a flag in the system because there's a violation of some sort. The big issue becomes then is who do you share it with? How is it shared? What safeguards are in place to make sure that only law enforcement purposes are served and that the tag reader information is properly purged and there's accountability? We can run the gamut from one agency, I will mention, that has no retention policy, has a great use and defines what they're supposed to be used for and that you have to use it for law enforcement purposes, but it doesn't specify how long you keep it. We have other agencies like Rockville City that has a 30-day retention. However, everything they send is live to the Maryland Coordination Center where it's got a retention period of one year from the date that it's entered. Those tags are run in through the system. Then you have Montgomery County that's very similar, it's a one-year retention period. Senator Raskin's legislation, which started off, he co-sponsored, was 30 days and then it's now, I think at a year and a half. It's a year to 18 months retention, although that legislation probably isn't going to go anywhere this year. So what, the common thread is about one-year retention is ideal because. ideal because that gives us time if we have a, a pattern, a hotspot crime, but then all of a sudden we develop a suspect or you arrest him in, in, in one case, six months after the hotspot trend started, we can go back and, and track and see if he's been involved in those crimes or been in the city during those periods of time. So retention is extremely important. The question is, do we want to retain that on our level? Or do we want to, you know, not have to deal with the retention at our level and allow the, the MCAC to retain it, which is what Rockville City does? Rockville City keeps it 30 days on their machine, on the local machine, and then it disappears. So if we need to do a search, we actually have to either call the Maryland Coordination Center and give them the tag. So there is a record kept of every inquiry that's made. And again, it has, it has to fall within those law enforcement purposes or it can't be made. We can't do it because an officer wants to find out who's been, you know, somebody that say, hey, can you tell if this guy's been, we can't do that. There has to be accountability in the system. There are states where that's not the case. There are jurisdictions where that's not the case. And there are private companies out there right now, several of which are constantly hounding police departments to participate in their program and give the data to them. And they sell the data. And we're not going to, we can't do that. We're not going to do that, especially if we use the state system. It will go directly to them. And that is a federally funded fusion center that is, is extremely well-run and they have very strict standards on the use of that data and the privacy of that data.
So would that data be shared with federal agencies?
Only for law enforcement purposes or, you know, obviously, you know, Homeland Security if there's an issue with a particular tag. But you've got to remember, this thing is running hundreds of tags an hour. No one has the time to go pull a tag out of thin air and say, oh, I want to see what this person, I mean, it's just not going to happen. The reality of it is that this is used for law enforcement purposes, the criteria for, it's just like if I want to run somebody's tag in my car and, on the computer, there is a trail that shows that I ran that tag. And if there's, and they do annual audits. And if it is something that I ran for non-law enforcement purposes, then it's a violation of state law or federal law, depending on which, you know, how it was run. And it's the same thing for this data. What I'm proposing is that we upload, we, in order for us to get off of the system we're on, right now, we are on a standalone laptop that we have to maintain. We have to make sure that it can communicate and download data. And right now, I think we're still using manual downloads in it. What we would want to do is what, similar to what the county does and what most of the other jurisdictions in Maryland do. So the data is downloaded live. As stolen cars get entered, it gets put in live. As felony vehicles get put in, it's live. And it prevents us from having to put the data in every day. The system is set up so that we use our regular computer in the car, which cuts, cuts the cost down. The software's already in there. So when it runs it, it, it can alert us right away. After 30 days, it's deleted automatically from that computer. And then the only way to get it is actually make that formal request. My understanding is that the MCAC will be creating a web, a web access for law enforcement officers to run the tag, just with, you know, registration check. But again, it's, there's accountability with it because there is a trail, an auditable trail, that shows that you ran this tag and the purpose.
Councilmember Seaman, Councilmember Mill.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing this to us. I just wanted to start out with a little historical perspective. When we first purchased the license plate scanners, you know, the council had this similar type of discussion at that time as far as what the retention policy could, should be and, and how they should, how the police should interact with the, the state database to identify the, the various lookouts that there are for everything from expired tags to whatever. And careful consideration was given to that. And at that time, the feeling of the council was, the majority of the council was, that there was a recognition of the value of recognizing stolen cars as they pass through the city and being able to use them for that. But there was a, a feeling, and again, from the information provided by the chief at that time, that for investigative purposes, a short retention period was valuable for most of the crimes, that there is some value for holding on to the, the license plate numbers that had been scooped up as, as the police driven the scanner around town. Some for long-term use, but that it had diminishing returns. It was less frequently going to be valuable. There was a strong concern on the council at that time that they wanted to retain the information within the city boundaries and not turn it over to other policing jurisdictions. And some of that is, was based on fears of how it could be used and might be used for non-policing purposes. And especially when, you know, it, when it gets turned over to the state and then maybe the federal agencies have access to it, that it's, it's feeding an information base that could be used for things that might not be comfortable to the residents of the city. And that was kind of the logic behind it. And that was why it was, the idea was that, okay, there are things that could be hit, such as stolen vehicles, stolen tags coming through the city. There was also some discussion of not using it for just picking up people for registrations that had expired and things like that. But it was very limited use that the council talked about at that time. And so I think as we, as we move forward, I think it's important to understand kind of where we were. It wasn't, it was a conscious decision that was made. And so part of what I'd like to hear from you is what's, what's kind of changed between then and now? And, and also what, it seems like the downloading daily of the, of the wants for these various tag numbers and things like that hasn't been an overburdened some problem that we've heard about? You know, is it, has something changed to make that more of a burden?
Well, frankly, it wasn't done because they weren't using it because it was a burden. The, the other issue is when the tag reader program first started in Tacoma Park, very few agencies had really defined guidelines on how they would be used, when they would be used, and how long the data would be retained. Maryland, the, the MCAC has a very specific policy. It is one year. That's it. The data is deleted automatically. It's purged from the system. Unless there's a reason to keep it for evidentiary purposes because that particular car or tag number was used in a, let's say, a homicide or a robbery, then it would be flagged and it could be kept for that, for that purpose and that purpose alone. It's also very specific regulations now on how that data is to be disseminated. It has to be for law enforcement purposes only, for criminal investigations. And that's the only thing it can be used for.
But there was some fear at the time that we talked about this, that that could include immigration enforcement at the federal level, that the, that if it was turned over from the city to the state, that we then lost all control of, you know, who was getting the information beyond that. And that in fact, Department of Homeland Security or Immigration Enforcement could be part of that.
Again, it's, it's got to be criminal enforcement. Those are civil warrants mostly. They would not be used for that. The other thing to remember is that, you know, we, it's a two-way street. If we are to be participating in this regional effort to reduce crime, we can't be the one piece of the jigsaw puzzle that's missing. And I, I understand what you're saying about immigration issues and, but those are non, unless they get a hit on a deported felon that's wanted for something, you know, they would not be getting that information. My understanding is the MCAC is only for law enforcement purposes. And again, there's an audit trail. And, you know, the, the federal government does not routinely go into the Maryland Fusion Center and just run tags. They don't look at that data. What they look at is, again, the data's there. You have to know what you're looking for. You just can't say, okay, you know, I'm going to just look at it this day and see how many people we have for immigration hits. That's not the way it works. You have to give them a tag number to, to run to get that information back on that particular car.
Right. And obviously, audit trail is nice. It's comforting, but it doesn't tell me anything on the council. I mean, I never see the trail. I never get to, to.
Well, the officers would be subject, on our level, would be subject to a disciplinary process as is in the policy of the, the MCAC. There is a disciplinary process attached to it for improper use of that, just like it is if I ran somebody's tag. And it was because I wanted to find out where they lived for some other reason other than law enforcement purposes.
And then the only other point I'll make, and I'm not even sure if there's a proposal yet, I think what you're saying is that we would leave it, we would retain it for 30 days and then let it roll over to the state?
Well, it would immediately get transmitted to the state through the MDT. Whether we kept it for 30 days or 60 days or a year, that's, that's an easy decision to make because it's going to be automatic where we don't have to worry about it. Personally, the less we have to keep it on our end, the better it is because then we don't have to have the audit, the yearly audits done that may come out of the legislature that are going to be required by the departments that have servers where they keep the information. If we send it to someone else, then we don't have to maintain it. But it's still our data.
Okay. And lastly, I'd just say that in the annual report that you just reviewed with us, and I compliment you on the, the good statistics you're showing us. I think...
And you can thank Kathy. Put a lot of work into it this year and hopefully we'll keep improving on it.
She put a lot of work into putting the pretty pictures in here. But, you know, your whole staff did the work that made the numbers look good. And I think, was it the burglaries? You said it's almost 100%?
No, robberies.
Robberies.
Yeah. I wish burglaries were, but our burglaries are still like in the 40s, which is well above the 8% that is the national average on burglary closures. So.
When I, when I look at the report though, I'm not hearing the problem, or not seeing the problem we're trying to fix by changing our policy.
Well, there's a couple things. One, if we wanted to add additional tag readers, right now, DC is the co, is the sub-grantee for the COG LPR program, which was based out of Fairfax before. Now it's DC. I can make a phone call tomorrow if we have a policy in place where we are allowed to use it. And I can have more tag readers here, you know, within, you know, whatever period of time. Same thing with the, the GOCAP. The Governor's Office of Crime Control has just instituted another grant and obtained more money for tag readers and upgrading the tag readers that, that people already have. Apparently, two of ours were purchased through GOCAP and I think one through COG. So it gives us the opportunity to get additional equipment, whether it be fixed pole or mobile tag readers by, by participating in it. And, and it does serve a purpose because not only is our data getting sent up, right now, it'd be a one-stop, stop. If we go to MCAC and say, hey, we need to find out about this, this suspect, you know, can we track this car over the last six months? They're going to get the data from Prince George's County, Montgomery County, Tacoma Park, and they interface with DC so that they can get the complete picture. We don't have to make five different phone calls, including trying to find the data ourselves in our own system. So, yeah, it does, it does create a much smoother operation and it eliminates the need to have that separate, another computer in the car just for the LPRs. We can now use the mobile data computers that every car has that interfaces and it's live. We also get the downloads live, which is real time.
I haven't had the feeling that you've felt these were a priority piece of equipment when I've seen the infrequency of their use and the length of time it's taken to get two of the three back on the street. So it doesn't seem like it's a priority.
No, it is a priority. But it was one where the council had mandated, you know, years ago, a very restrictive policy on the use and it limited our, the real benefits of the program. And it became not really worth using. That's, that's why we haven't been using it to its full potential. That's what I'm asking for now is we, we have all these other jurisdictions that have mature programs. We're just trying to get in line with them with the proper safeguards so that we can be on one page. Thank you.
Councilmember Mill.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, the one time I did a ride along was with, I think, Corporal Black, a number of three years ago. And, and we, he used one of these. And so it was very interesting to see it in action. And I think there was an expired tag that we stopped. So there's the questions we have in front of us around how long we keep the data, whether it's automatically uploaded or not. And then to me, there are questions about, that we have concerns in the, in the discussion about what others will do with the data. But then also process for our own police force to use it, both for the immediate, you call them hot links, what's, what's the sort of active, there's a case right now, somebody's tagged it in the database. Like there's a stolen car. What is that?
Well, it would just be, the car's entered in, in the database and it would just be a stolen car hit or a felony vehicle for a robbery or something. But it has to be entered into the tag reader system.
Sure.
And that's why the downloads twice a day or, you know, don't work because, you know, the guy robbed somebody. We can have that immediately entered into the tag reader system. But if you're still doing manual downloads, you're not getting it for 12 hours.
Right, sure. Okay. So, so there's, there's the active hits and then there's the, I'm going back and looking for evidence, you know, afterwards. And so we also have the option of talking about the policy. And the only one of the standards or the set of guidelines that I read was the Montgomery County policy that, that I found on the ACLU website. They had a, I guess a FOIA. They, they got the documents. So I was able to read it. And so that one has clear process for, you know, the officers to request the data, depending on how old the data is, how they would use it. So it seems to me there are safeguards like that we can talk about, just, or, you know, whether there's safeguards or not, just process. You know, so making the process clear for how your, your staff will use information, both new and, and old, that might create some certainty. I'm supportive of, of the, I think, the outlines of the proposal that you gave, you know, to the extent that we have, it is just an outline at this point. But the idea of trying to match our standards up with the other jurisdictions around here, trying to adopt or opt into essentially the state system of automatic upload, that, I say that with the caveat that, that I would, I would really benefit from either the department providing a summary or somebody at the state level providing a summary, or our attorney providing a summary of the, of some more background on the state policy, as well as the legislation that was being considered this year, given that it, it is Senator Raskin, given that the progress, the, you know, the legislation remains active for a long period of time. I'm assuming it will come up again in another session. And so it would benefit us to know, to just understand what that is, understand how it might change, so that we ourselves have an opinion on it. That might be a way to move into this in a more informed way. But in general, I mean, I'm supportive of the concept of, of us being able to acquire more of these. I, I don't personally have an opinion, nor have I heard much, one way or another, on fixed location versus mobile. But that's, that's an open question as well. But to me, the, the questions are, you know, do we opt fully into the sort of state system, the instant upload into the state system? And do we create policy and process for our own force to use it?
Yeah. We have, we have one other option too, is we can upload to the county, but we can actually have ours so it doesn't go to the state, but it would stay in the county. Again, I'm looking at an investigator that has to call multiple agencies to get the tag information when we have, the county uploads theirs to, to MCAC. And that's still within their policy guidelines, which you've read. And the MCAC policy is very, very similar. I've got, I've got Prince George's County, Montgomery County. I believe I have green belts and a number of other jurisdictions, including DC's final draft, which is not done yet. So, and they had up to a two-year retention on one draft. So the big issue, I think, is, is the privacy issues. I think somebody brought it up during the break, is the Maryland Public Information Act, could somebody say, I want to see these, you know, if this tag was run, you know, because my wife's cheating on, on me and I want to find out if her car was in a particular location. Well, that wouldn't. It would be an intelligence file. And the added protection under the MCAC versus the county... MCAC versus the county is that MCAC, because it's federally funded, even though it's not run by the feds, doesn't apply, you know, the MPI doesn't apply to them, it applies under FOIA, which is actually a lot tighter on, on protection of that, that information. So that, that's one of the reasons why I was leaning towards that as well. But the policies are pretty, pretty specific, and if you like the Montgomery County policy, it's pretty much what we're looking at. With the exception that we don't particularly want to retain the data here.
Yeah, and my point is really just in the, in terms of the state, it'd be good to get more background on the current state policy and on the legislation, in part because then seeing the legislation helps us understand why someone thought there was a need for that legislation.
Well, and there was a lot of misinformation on how the data was going to be used. We don't know where the 30-day rule came up for that original legislation, but that piece of legislation has changed to one year to 18 months now.
Right, right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Schultz.
If money was not the object, and we gave, and we decided here as a city council that we wanted to, say, imitate the county process, what would be the ideal number of tag readers that our police department would want to have?
Well, one, money wouldn't really necessarily be an object anyway, because the COG is funding most of the LPR programs, and what COG's not funding, GOCAP's funding. So by playing on their team to some degree, I mean, we still have control over our data to a degree, but by playing with them, it's not costing the city much, if anything, including to repair the, the things when they break. So I would say money's not really the object, it's whatever we can get out of COG. I know that PG County asked for 360 more tag readers. I know that they scaled it back, yeah, more tag readers. They already have 300. They have fixed and, and, and mobile, but I know they've scaled it back considerably because they're not going to get that many from COG because.
Sounds like it's already put NASA to, the NSA to shame.
Well, and frankly, every police chief in Maryland cringed when the Deputy Director of Department of Homeland Security said he wanted to create a national tag database. We all cringed, every single one of us. None of us want it, none of us, it's a great law enforcement tool, and that is the last thing we wanted to have done, to have public opinion turned around and have it misused. And I, you'll see major city chiefs, and IACP is not going to be in favor of it. Of course, you notice within eight hours, the director retracted that because it was a stupid thing to say. So the reality of it is, cost is really not the biggest factor. The biggest factor right now is, is policy and council mandate.
Are you going to be preparing a request or a proposal, a written proposal?
Yes.
That, that we and then the residents can all react to? Because I do want to, at the, whenever that is, I do really want the input from the ACLU on, on what they, what comes up. Because I just, just speaking personally, I just want to get educated on the whole purview of things. The other question, one other question I have is, is any of this data that's, that would be collected at the state level subject to subpoena by the courts? I mean, let's suppose there's a divorce case, and you got a divorce lawyer, and he gets the court to subpoena the, the data, and could that data be accessed that way?
Now, the way, the way it is, the policy is written, like in Montgomery County, it is an intelligence file. Intelligence files are not open to MPI, they're sensitive files, just like, you know, the gang files and things like that would be MPI-protected. Personnel files are MPI-protected, things like that, so. And then, again, under MCAC, it would even be more protected because it would be FOIA versus MPI. The Maryland Public Information Act is a little more liberal than the Federal Freedom of Information Act.
Uh huh, huh. It's good to know. Now, you prefaced your remarks by saying everything this side of the Potomac. Is there a distinction?
No, I just didn't grab the policies from, from Virginia because they're very similar to the ones here. Fairfax County, Arlington, and Alexandria all use tag readers.
And do you find that having them in the pool of data makes it?
Oh, absolutely. We've had cases where we've had a robbery and the stolen car hits in Northern Virginia on a, you know, later on, a week's later, we'll find out that they were involved in something in Northern Virginia.
Okay. So how many tag readers would, would, would be a reasonable amount?
Well, we'd like to field several per shift. I mean, we, you know, and, and we certainly could put one on every car, but that's really not cost-effective because they can be taken off and put on another car, as long as we have the computers in every car. The, the biggest issue is, we'd also like to use it for our surveillance van, you know, in those areas where we have hotspots or our surveillance vehicle. They're a little harder to hide because you, the cameras need a clear view. And then I would, I would recommend several fixed poles on, you know, major routes in and out of the city. I mean, you're going to go through them as soon as you hit Eastern Avenue, so, in the district.
And I guess those are all time sequenced, so that you can tell that the, the car that you're looking for is going northbound as opposed to into the district, or?
Oh, yeah, well, it takes a picture.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you can, yeah, so you can see where they're headed in.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks, that's the only questions I had.
And I had a question or two, and I know Councilmember Grimes has something as well. When you say COG, you're talking about the Urban Area Security Initiative grant?
Yes.
So it's federal money?
Correct.
Just like the Maryland GOCAP money would be federal money, essentially.
Correct.
So it's all federal money, it just depends on who it goes through. And when you were talking early on about MCAC, and then I was starting to think, okay, well, how does that tie into the district? It sounds like it ties into the district and Virginia as well, that if you, that you, if you ask for information from MCAC, they kind of pool area, or is it specific to Maryland and is something required to go beyond the state border?
No, right now, it is, it is, you, I, we would have to make two phone calls. In six months, we will not.
Or three phone calls if you wanted, Virginia.
Virginia. But at, at least with the district and Maryland, I just went to a meeting at MCAC where we went over a lot of their programs, not just the tag readers, but, and we actually talked to them about the interface and that type of thing. They are, they are in talks right now, actually in the process with DC, of being able to do searches both directions. So that if somebody hits a tag reader in DC, you can still call MCAC and they'll say, hey, by the way, it hit three in DC as well.
And so is, just as COG money or GOCAP money, is federal money, is the Maryland Fusion Center, the DC, whatever it is, the Virginia Fusion Center, is that all federal money? Is that all tied together under federal policy on this? I'm just trying to.
No, I mean.
I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, no.
With the protections with MCAC, are those protections, then when you start going farther afield to these other states, does something change, or is it all under MCAC policy?
No, they still retain their data. It's just a way of mining to see, you know, and, and again, there's a record, if you checked this tag and it came back and hit in DC, there's a record of it, but they still retain the data in DC, and they still eliminate it after a specified period of time. Same thing in Maryland, if DC has the ability to interface with, with Maryland's database, it's still Maryland's database, it's not DC's. They can't just take the data and keep it somewhere else. It's not going to them, it's just you're making the inquiry. It's just a tool to get in, to make the inquiries, that's all it is.
So that, so that if, if we were looking for something and we were wondering whether it hit Rockville, we were wondering whether it hit the district, we were wondering if it hit Arlington, it would be inquiries through MCAC out to those jurisdictions, and, and those jurisdictions, like in the case of Rockville, it would be housed at MCAC.
Right.
And so you're, it's a, it's a simplified way of getting the pool of information, but you still have individual responsibility, depending on the jurisdiction.
Correct. And, and individual responsibility on the people making the queries. And eventually, you will have a web-based query tool, just like we do in a car where we can run a tag, we can run it through MCAC to see where that tag is hit. But again, there's, there's a trail, and you have specific requirements for being able to run that tag and being authorized to run it.
Because I feel, I feel more comfortable than I did when the council had the original discussions about this, because it sounds like there are more policies and more restraints in place that would prevent abuse, but it's also in the context of what we're learning about NSA and other things where you just feel like, can you ever really trust?
Well, yeah, and, you know, there's a lot of misinformation. I think it was the inquiry, the examiner just did an article about the link system, and they, they went in with a particular slant already in mind, and the big question was, well, you know, the military's paying for this, so it was like the federal government, the military spying on everybody. Well, the link system basically is a data mining tool that we use every day as an investigative tool, and it allows us to, any department that has arrests or reports and stuff, they dump their data into, you know, into this pool, but it's, it's still owned by the agency, it just mines it. So, for instance, we had our, the case the other day with the armed robbery with a SmartTrip card. We found one SmartTrip card, all we had to do is run the person's name, we found out that they were a victim of a carjacking in DC through links, and it pulled up the DC police report. So it's a big time saver. It's run by NCIS because that's who the National Institute of Justice decided to give the grant money to to run the program, but it's our program, it's law enforcement's program, they just happen to, to be the one that runs it for us.
Okay. And then, and just one final clarification on the fixed LPRs. I've decided, as a result of what I've heard tonight, that that answers the question that I've always wondered, why it seems that sometimes when you go near a traffic signal that hasn't turned red, and you'd expect a flash from a red light camera, it must be an LPR camera flashing because it got a hit, because it looks like fixed pole, and they look like round loudspeaker type, you know, like a front and then a back behind it, like a loudspeaker up on a pole, and they, they flash occasionally. Might that be a fixed?
It could be, it also could be just, some of the cameras also record right turns on red, and some of them are put into a mode known as calibration mode, where they just test them, and it just, it will hit, and the flash goes off even though you're not speeding or you didn't run a red light, but it doesn't take a picture.
But you know, the problem is, it makes you feel like you've just had a bad day.
Yeah. And it's, it's never been me, but it's the oncoming traffic coming down New Hampshire a little bit inside the Beltway, and this thing goes off.
At Adelphi, yeah, that one goes off all the time. And I, that, I'm, that's not a tag reader. That's just that, I think it's the right turn on red or whatever, but it's, it's pretty sensitive.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Grimes.
Thanks. Do these things ever serve a deterrent function? You know, the idea, oh, Prince George's has 300, well, they're going to have 650 if they get the additional ones, I'm going to stay away from there, ever?
Yeah, they do. In fact, I was talking to Jack Simpson, who's a retired state police captain or a major, and he now works for Highway Safety. One of the things they've noticed in Baltimore area where he, he still works out of, is that the stolen cars will get off the highway, go around the cameras, and come back on. Of course, they might have mobile cameras over there and pick them up, but they actually will, just like a fixed speed camera, they will learn where they are. Generally, around here, you're not going to have that, because, you know, we just, but, but it is a deterrent. If they know that they're out here, and granted, there's ways around it, they can put different tags on the car, they can put temp tags, but that's where we come back, they can put false temp tags on a car, but that's where we can come back three months from now and say, oh, okay, these are the tags we got, he's putting it on the same red BMW that ran from us three times. You know, so there's still some value in it, even if they do some of the strategies to try and circumvent it.
Yeah. I'm curious, what's the typical service life of a camera, noting that ones that are mounted on a vehicle are going to be different from ones on a pole, but noting that the service life might be limited not by the durability of the camera, but also by the, the advance of technology?
Well, the, the company that COG uses, and, and, and most of the departments in the region use, generally, they're not replacing a lot of the cameras. You know, they can, most of them are software upgradable. I mean, obviously, better cameras come out, the hardware comes out, that's something else.
I'm sure that sees better in the dark, that.
Yeah, but I mean, the, the ones that we have work. And one of the other advantages, too, with this program, by using the same cameras, everybody using the same system, is that there's a, I can't remember the name of the service command, something software, where actually it will alert, like if somebody goes through with a stolen car in Prince George's County, it will immediately come up on our screen that there's an alert, you know, two miles from us on University Boulevard heading our way of a stolen car. So I mean, there's, that, that's one of the advantages to the newer system. But those are all software upgrades, and, and again, that's coming out of UASI funds and, and GOCAP funds, and it's really not, it's not a major hit on the police departments.
The, the reason I'm asking isn't money, the end of the ser, I'm, I'm thinking out loud here, welcoming your reaction. The end of the service life of a piece of equipment is essentially a sunset on the use of that equipment. So the next question I have is going to go in that direction. Would it cause you any grief if we enacted a policy that had a sunset clause to it, or that required periodic reauthorization? When I say grief, because you have entered into data sharing agreements with other jurisdictions, or maybe because the funders fund this thing with the expectation that it's not going to get cut off after two years?
Well, the LPR program right now, the funding, and I was, I'm the vice chair of the committee, I can tell you that that's one of the three high priority programs that as, as long as there's UASI money, those are the ones that we're going to try and fund. It will not go away, but, but more specifically, as far as the sunset, I would prefer not having a sunset rule, only because, you know, this isn't reinventing the will, it's, it's an existing program, it's, if it's run correctly, and the council always has the opportunity to turn around and change the law. I mean, you can always change it.
Yeah, of course, but putting aside a sunset, a periodic reauthorization every two years or something like that, that can be changed, too, to being permanent, but it forces the entity to take a look at the experience. And, and that would be a step toward compromise to, to compromise with the people who don't like the idea of a different policy. Yeah, I'm just, as I said, floating ideas.
Yeah, I mean, it's, is, these are about $18,000 apiece, and then when you start talking about putting in the fixed poles and then having the power run to them and things, I mean, a two-year sunset might not be reasonable, maybe a little longer.
That's why I asked you the question.
But I, but I think, I, I think that, you know, I, I think that part of our annual report would, would, you know, especially if we expand the program and it's actually used as it's supposed to be, would be, that would be part of the annual report that we'd be submitting to you, is the, the use of the tag readers and any audits that we have done.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thanks, this is.
Mr. Ray, just confirming that the next step is that?
There would be a, I would assume there would be a draft policy that would come to us to consider.
And a public hearing?
Yes.
And it would be, I, I think at this point, it would be very similar to what Rockville City has, and I can send you a copy of their policy.
That'd be helpful.
Okay.
So, so the process would be, it would come back as a work session, and if we wanted to go forward, we would take testimony and go from there.
Okay.
Thanks very much for your effort on this and for the work of the department, and thank you all, to all of the members of the department who were here this evening, and we appreciate your work.
So in your bedtime for?
We're adjourned.